City Clerk, could you call the roll call please?
Counselor Capone.
Yep.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese. Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
And President Delasola.
Here.
You have nine members present. You do have a quorum.
Please stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting, Counselor McKinnon has a family commitment.
Item number one, Mr. President, is a public hearing offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president to all parties interested in the public hearing to allow National Grid permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way: Gladstone Street; National Grid to install one SO pole beginning at a point approximately 40 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of School Street; the new SO pole number 2133, and anchors on Gladstone Street.
Please postpone item number one.
Yes, we can do that. I do ask that you open the public hearing so that way we do everything in accordance with the law. Open it. We don't have to hold it, and then table it would be the proper motion.
Okay, so the motion would be to open public hearing.
Yep.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
And then I would table.
The motion is to table it.
No, we're going to table it because it's going to be the same meeting, Counselor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two, Mr. President, is a petition for a public hearing offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president to all parties interested in the public hearing to allow National Grid permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, always here and after named: Gladstone Street and Broadway; National Grid to install beginning at a point approximately 115 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of School Street and continuing approximately 250 feet in an easterly direction; National Grid to install two five-inch conduits encased in concrete from his existing pole number 2132 Gladstone Street to existing MH 236 Broadway.
Mr. President. Make a motion to open public hearing. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Make a motion to table item number two. That's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Make a motion to...seconded. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Open it. The ayes have it.
Counselors, we have three people on the list to speak for public participation.
First name on the list? Three.
I believe the last name is Fierlo.
Allow three minutes each?
Sorry, I couldn't read the first name.
Two minutes each.
Sorry about that.
How many speakers?
There are just three speakers.
Three speakers, three minutes each. We cannot respond back to you if you have any questions. Just turn that mic on. Thank you.
How's this?
Perfect.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm Andrea Fierlo, the co-chair of the Massachusetts Library Association Intellectual Freedom Social Responsibility Committee. I am also a librarian and a member of the Noble Library Network, which is what is Everett is part of. I am here to make a statement in support of library trustees here and in every city and town in the Commonwealth. Library trustees are powerful advocates for libraries and the communities they serve. As the Everett Public Library's mission states, "Open to all. The libraries will promote literacy, protect intellectual freedom, and encourage lifelong learning." These fundamental library values are best protected by a board of trustees. Trustees, whether in advisory or governance position, are the voice of the community when it comes to the oversight of library services and collections. This oversight provides a vital democratic function as a collaborative, yet separate, check and balance on city and library governance. Trustees ensure a public library remains open and free to all without political influence. Without a board of trustees, issues regarding fair, equal, equitable access are at risk, such as that materials and information are available to residents that are accessible and free from censorship, the protection of patron privacy, policies, procedures, and rules that are fair and open to all, meeting spaces are made available to all regardless of belief or affiliation, adherence to the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights, affirming libraries or forums for the free exchange of ideas and information. The proposed changes to the Everett Board of Trustees limiting duties to the expenditure of trust funds as left by the will of Mr. Parlin will have an immediate and long-term damaging impact on library management and the delivery of services to the people of Everett. Policy that is consistent with ALA's Library Bill of Rights and supports access to information for all people is essential for maintaining a free public library. It is the role of a board of trustees working with the library director to ensure access to services and information not be restricted in any way. We respectfully ask that the Everett City Council reject the proposed ordinance changes regarding the undue infringement of the library board of trustees' role. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Patty Cheever.
Just state your name, please.
Sure. My name's Patty Cheever. And forgive me because I need to read from notes this evening. I am here to speak also in opposition to the changes proposed in the administrative code for the library board of trustees. This, the laws regulating this have been on the books for almost 100 years now, and it doesn't seem that we need to move in such haste as regards this particular issue, as there are state agencies currently working to rectify the confusion surrounding these laws. Beyond that issue is the larger question of the totality of the changes being proposed to the administrative code this evening and the fact that those changes are an all or nothing proposition. So tonight you vote in favor of all of them or you vote to oppose all of them. That's my understanding. My understanding is also that action must be taken at this meeting because there's a 60-day deadline to act from the time you first receive the issue on your calendar. So you have three options, from what I understand, tonight. You can vote in favor of all of them, you can vote to oppose all of them, or you could vote to table the issue, in which case the changes would take effect automatically, take effect, pardon me, automatically. And it's that third option that I find troubling because I've, as we all do, have heard through the grapevine that there is a consideration being made to table this so that it passes automatically. So I would urge you that the important and in many cases significant changes to the administrative code deserve an up or down, an up or down vote. If you affirm in your belief that the proposed changes are warranted and benefit the residents of the city, then by all means vote yes. If you have any sliver of a doubt that any of them are not in the best interest of the city and may not be warranted at this time, then I urge you to vote no, because tabling the issue, it shouldn't be an option in this case. The residents have a right to know where all of our elected officials stand on any issue that comes before them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Matt. Sorry, the last name's hard to read. First name's Matt.
Has anybody else signed in that hasn't spoken?
And then I still have you on the list, Chief.
Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening. Steve Maisy, Chief of Police for the City of Everett. I just wanted to come before you tonight to correct the record from last meeting. A comment was made that on, although the date wasn't given, I did some work on it. On March 30th, we responded to Everett Square on the report of three individuals outside of a storefront. We were there at about 10:29. We got a AM, we got a call. We responded within two minutes. We spent about seven minutes there. Officers Man Drake here and Donnelly, they dealt with three men, local men, that we were aware with, aware of rather, and we sent them on their way. And just to follow up on the conversation we had, and again, these are difficult situations when we're dealing with potentially homeless, mentally ill, people who have either drug or alcohol problems. But we do our best to manage them, but we did go to that call and provided the service. And I know communication is an issue. I talked to the mayor on it. We're prepared to give a proper, a formal response, but in the meantime, if people want more information, whether it's this party or the public, I encourage them, they should really start using social media because that's the platforms that we've been utilizing, whether it's Everett Police Department, Facebook, Twitter, which is at EverettPoliceMA, as well as I also have a Chiefs, at Chief Maisy, Twitter feed, and you can get a lot of information that's going on daily. So we have a number of people that are posting incidents, and that's the best, I think, way to get up to date on things as they happen. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any more speakers? Make a motion to close public participation if there are no further speakers. Motion to close it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The portion is closed. All in favor, take three. All opposed? The ayes have it. Can you read three on the agenda, please?
Yes. Item number three, Mr. President, is appointments offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of eight individuals as patrolmen in the Everett Police Department.
Favorable action?
Favorable action.
Roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays, you have confirmed the appointment. Would the officers please make their way to the front so I can spread them in? I'm going to chop up. The appointees' names are Andre Afonso, Daniel Wall, Carlos Flores, Brian DeSilva, Nicholas Stanfield, Kelsey Granham, Nicholas Bestieri, and Sarah, I don't want to chop up your name. Sarah Navoycek. Officers, are we ready? Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the city of Everett.
For the city of Everett.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulation.
Regulation.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordances and charter.
Ordances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the laws.
And I'll support the laws.
And Constitution.
And Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, officers. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck, boys. Go joyous.
Yeah, digger. Once the officers sign their citation, we'll have a 10-minute recess. Families can come up and take pictures.
I know.
You want to come up and take pictures? The families on one at a time? All Consulors, we continue the meeting, please. Counsel Capone.
Mr. President, if we could make a motion to have our Legislative aide clerk the meeting until our clerk is available.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Spend the rules, take item number 18.
Seconded, take 18 on the agenda. All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. Can you please read 18 on the agenda, please?
Mr. President, number 18 is an order offered by Counsel Richard Della Soulis, President, in order to amend the City of Everett Administrative Code. It was in the Committee of the Whole, and it was referred back from the Committee with no recommendation.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't know if we have the opportunity this evening to...I don't think we do have the opportunity to divide this anyway. This is an up or down vote, correct? Just so we're on the understanding, correct?
Correct.
So unfortunately, my vote this evening will be a no vote. I support a lot of what's in this document. I think a lot of hard work has been put into this document, and a lot of good points are made in this document. But I at no time can support changes that would affect our libraries that have run for decades. Unquestionably, one of the best departments in our city and have impacted thousands of lives in our community, and we're going to change it this evening, not under my watch. And I will be voting no this evening because I don't think it's a time or the place to be able to put it in the middle of another large document. I had wished that we would be able to divide this question because I could support a lot of the other stuff that's in this, except for the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've gone through the document as well. There are quite a few concerns that I have, some of them in different levels. But obviously, the most important concern is any revision whatsoever to the way the Board of Trustees operates or the way the Director is put in place. There's been a lot of talk about Powell and Will. The Board of Trustees has been in place for 139 years. Board of Trustees came in place, originally it was the Board of Directors, in 1878. And then Powell was turned over to the Trustees in 1880. Mr. Powell, in 1892, offered money and land. And in 1895, the building was dedicated. But many trustees over the years have put tireless effort into this community, serving this community. 139 years, multiple administrations. There is absolutely no reason to change this. They're doing a stellar job. They're an incredible asset to this community. I know firsthand just how valuable they are and their efforts. And that one piece alone, I would vote no. But there are many others in here that I have concerns, so I will not be supporting the code tonight.
Any more, Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, we all get elected to make tough decisions. And some decisions are not good according to our people, and some are bad. I mean, bad, and some are good. This has a lot of good changes in it. And it's unfortunate that we have something in front of us that we have to vote either up and down on the whole situation. But we're here to make the tough decisions. And I'm a checks and balance person. If something works 80% and doesn't work the other 20%, then you vote for it. Honestly speaking, I have never voted on anything on the library because my sister works there. So I asked the questions last week, and I was surprised on some of the things that I learned because I never really went through the budget, never really asked the questions because of that reason. And my sister has been working there for over 30 years, so no, I didn't get her the job. I want to make that clear. So the point is, we have wonderful people on this board. We have wonderful people in the audience that nobody should be taking this personal. What they should understand that we're sitting here on a packet that has been said by Charter, that the administration put together, and unfortunately, the whole packet, oh, it's none. So you don't throw away 80% just because of the 20%. Now, if there were other items on this administrative code, as the Counsel said, that are not right, then let's go through them tonight.
Correct.
Okay? Nothing was brought up. The only thing that was brought up in this administrative code was basically the library. Other than that, I don't see anybody else bringing up anything else on this code. There were some good things on this code. So we have a decision to make, and unfortunately, we have to make it tonight because our votes will go over the 60 days. So, thank you.
If there's no more, correct, Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that when we first received this administrative code, it was quite lengthy, and we all knew that it was quite a large package and quite a few many things in it. Kind of tough to stomach at one meeting, even though it went to a committee meeting also. But I took it home and worked on it for many, many hours. And I really took it apart, word for word, and so on and so forth. And I mean the whole, complete code. When I was finished, there was so much involved in it that so many things I wanted to change is that are not changed but wanted to correct, that would be a better word to use, that I wanted to meet with the mayor who was not available, but I did meet with Kevin O'Connor. And I don't know, I went up and saw him about 2:30 or something like that. It was on a Friday, no, it was on a Thursday. And we worked until the hour for the City Hall business to close. And I told him, I was sorry I kept him so long, but I'll leave because I still have a lot of questions. And he said, no. He says, we'll finish it. So we stayed for another hour, passed the time, and I finished it. And when we got the code back at our next meeting, all the corrections that I asked while we were in there. So there was many other things that we had questions on it that didn't come up before and that were now corrected, and it was all great. So I spent a lot, a lot of time in this thing. And it wasn't until this evening when we talked to the Counsel McGlaughlin while we were waiting for the other business to take care of itself, that I told him that I was going to, how I was going to vote on the library. And he says, you can't do that. And I said, why not? He said, because you have to vote for the administrative code as a whole. So now I'm thinking, you know, I put tons and tons of hours into that code, and I think that I have to stay by the work that I did on it. Could be a shame to say that, to vote against it. So that's how we'll be voting. Thank you.
Counsel DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Counselor DeFlorio quite a bit. No one here is questioning the dedication and the hard work that the Board of Trustees puts into the libraries each and every day and in the community. I think they do an exceptional job. And I was surprised to learn that they don't function under an experienced and trained HR department like the rest of the city does. I was always under the impression that it was like every other city department until I became more educated on the issue, and that is a bit concerning to me. And no one's trying to eliminate the Board of Trustees. No one's trying to close a library, as people have said out in public. We are faced with an all or nothing vote here. It's an up and down thing. A lot of work went into this code, and I am going to be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Counsel DePaultino.
Thank you. I mean, I've reviewed this, I've read it over and over again. The bulk of the work has been on the library and the trustees and how the Director is hired. Everything else in here is tweaking here, tweaking there. I have no problem with the tweaking. I think everything in here is fine. But I concur with some of the sentiments here. The library has operated and functioned extremely well with no complaints, no issues, nothing that's been brought to our attention. Just because we can change it doesn't mean that it's morally right to change it. And if it's not broken, don't fix it. So I'm...as far as anything else that's in here, I hope that the administration, if this does not pass, I hope the administration resubmits it. But I think that's the sticking point for some of us here. And for that reason, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. I have a question from the Chief. Counsel, don't mind. On the library itself, and the state, we had a ruling with the state. My question is, if we vote, if this passes, that it changes on the library itself? Are we breaking the code of the state? Yeah, please. I know this has been going two with two meetings, but I think it's very important to just get a quick answer on this. Just state your name and turn the mics on, please.
Matt Latanzi, Assistant City Solicitor.
Good evening, members of the Council. Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
We're going to have to answer that question with the state ruling.
So my understanding is, maybe you could help refresh my memory. I know it was brought up at the last meeting that there was a state law that may pass in the future with regard to libraries and Boards of Trustees. I believe one of the speakers from public participation brought that up.
Sure, I think it's...
The Director of the Libraries was the one who had brought it up, so...
Yes, please. You could...excuse me.
Right up Stacy DeBolt's Director.
With regards to the state statute, I'd just like to call your attention to the blue laws. There's a lot of stuff on the books that hasn't been enforced. For example, we could all not dance on Sundays. I forget what the chapter that is, okay, unless you had special permission. Kids would still be reading morning prayers every day in the Everett Public Schools if we followed state law. we followed state law. There are a lot of laws on the books, some of us call them blue laws, that have never been repealed, okay? This was from all, from everything that I understand about the research, okay? This may have been a Scrivener's era. It was improperly cataloged, okay? And the Mass Board, you know, this has been on the books for 100 years, okay? Libraries have been functioning for 100 years, even though this just came to light. Everyone has been interpreting towns as cities and towns. The boards have been doing it, it's just been done that way. Just like people have been ignoring the blue laws, okay? There are a lot of laws on the books that are ripe for repeal or all kinds of other stuff. Probably bookkeeping, there's a lot of legislation, but, you know, I think, I mean, Mr. Slattery's a legal counsel, he probably can speak to a lot of those things. Just because it's on the books doesn't mean, I mean, I wouldn't encourage anyone to break any state statutes, but spitting on the sidewalk, you know, the Everett Police are going to be pretty busy with that, and I think there's one chapter, you can re, let me see, I think there's one chapter here, you know, I hate to say the mayor's, oh, blasphemy, yes, up to a year in jail for blasphemy. That's still, what is it, chapter? You want to read this, Keith? What chapter is that?
That's okay, I'm more, I understand what you're saying.
Nope, there it is.
Let me ask, are we discussing in that statute what the distinction between a city and a town is, and that the towns were actually regulated under this statute but not cities? Is that what we're discussing? That's the plain reading of that statute. So the way that reads is the city of Everett would not be liable under that statute, that statute would not be enforceable. What we were talking about in conjunction with that is there are trust documents for these properties and the library in particular, that although they were recently discovered, doesn't make them any less valid. So the validity and the way that that trust would dictate how the library is run is what's really important here, especially in light of the fact that the plain reading of that statute is, that statute does not apply to the city of Everett. So that, if I'm understanding your question, I think that's the issue.
At the end of the day, no job losses here, correct? Just their duties itself?
Some duties will change.
Duties will change. All right.
The board will stay the same in number and in individuals, but the duties would change in accordance with the trust.
Okay. Counselor Florio, do you have a question?
So the trustees are not going to be eliminated?
No.
We're still going to have the trustees?
Same ones.
So I just want to make that clear, okay? So nobody-
But the trustees will be severely curtailed. The trustees are involved in every aspect of how the library ones, they provide, the trustees really provide the umbrella by which the libraries function. So they provide a level of intellectual freedom, okay, and protect the libraries from censorship from the political process. We don't talk about that a lot, but that's what-
Well, it is a political process because the mayor approves, he appoints every one of them, so no matter how you want to look at it.
He does, he does, but-
Yeah, so it's still political, so, you know, that's how you want to put it.
But once you're appointed, okay, you're appointed for, and I think the mayor can probably speak to this, you're appointed for a specific skill set that you have theoretically, okay? And once you're appointed to that, just like you're appointed to any other important city or state position, you're expected to put aside those political beliefs and act in the best interest of the library. Okay?
I think when it comes to the library, we've all done that. We've all put our political aside.
Well, that's-
I don't believe-
I would expect no less.
Right. I don't believe that once a librarian's ever come up here, asked for anything, or you've got a budget, we have never once questioned any librarian, I've been here 14 years, no matter whether you were the librarian or somebody else, we have never questioned you.
Right.
So even knowing that a lot of these things we didn't know, to be honest with you, just opened up a can of worms, okay? But even knowing that, or not knowing, but I didn't know, we never denied the library anything, and I don't think any political person would ever deny a librarian anything, no matter how this vote goes tonight. I don't think the library will ever be a political figure. You will always be able to run the library the way you want, or the way whoever the mayor appoints as a librarian. I don't think we've ever questioned a librarian, and I don't think we intend to in the future. Thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question to our director, which is, can you just explain briefly, in a few sentences, how we actually arrived to this? When did you know that this change was going to happen, and how did we actually arrive to this point of discussion?
I got an email from the city solicitor.
Just so out of the blue, it came up in discussion that this was going to be something that we were going to look to revise? Or did an episode happen? What actually started? Because this kind of came out of left field for me. I was not really aware that this was being discussed until-
Whenever new people are in positions, there's always a discussion of whose responsibility is what. So I think it came up in the context of who was responsible for what, and I think that I asked for a clarification of, so that we could get it sorted, and that's what happened.
And if we vote tonight for this, which I want to, the role of the Board of Trustees drastically changes upon approval of this piece, is in your interpretation, correct?
Yes.
So it really becomes no longer a Board of Trustees that are directing the libraries, it becomes a department under the administration that-
I think that's what's intended.
Okay. So there was no one issue that caused this to happen? There wasn't something that happened where the administration had, again, whether it was a personnel matter, or a safety matter, or any other type of a matter that they started to look at the role and responsibility of who was running the libraries and who was in charge, it kind of just-
I think it's a philosophical, at its root, I think it's a philosophical difference of how libraries are operating. And I think, you know, it's unfortunate that conversation took place the way that it did. We're about to engage in a long-range planning process, as libraries are required to do, and it would have been nice had the community had the opportunity to actually take part in that discussion. I feel like the discussion took place in a very limited kind of state, in a limited kind of way, but I think at its root, at its root, yes, there were some arguments, there were some disagreements about roles and responsibilities, but I really do believe at the center of this is a philosophical difference on how, on the governance of libraries, okay? And it's a very real one. It's a very real one. Should libraries be outside the political process and independent, free from censorship, as best as it can be? I mean, we're all human, so we all censor things? Or should it be just another city agency? I mean, that's the question.
I think to that point, this is the only department in the city that, like all other departments, is wholly funded by the city of Everett, but the city of Everett doesn't have any control about hiring or firing, about retention or positions. They don't function under our, as Counselor DePiero said, under our HR department, so therefore, therefore, the city has all the expense and all of the liability, but none of the say in the day-to-day business.
And I'll do respect to Mr. Slattery.
I would disagree with that. The mayor appoints the trustees, the trustees meet monthly, they review everything that goes on in the library. The HR department, the only thing that the library does right now, the HR department performs all the administrative functions. What we do is select the candidate. We select the candidates that we believe, and I mean, we're not always correct, I mean, it's not an exact science, but we select the candidate, but the HR department is involved in the whole administrative process.
And that's what I understood from the last meeting, which was where the query check came in and all of that was done through the HR department in the city's HR department, correct?
Right, that is correct.
So they put a nominee forward, and then HR does their process of due diligence before it is-
Well, from the posting, from the very-
They don't do the hiring.
They do the screening process?
Due diligence is a good word for it.
The due diligence, okay. So again, I was just trying to understand where this came from, because I kind of just found it coming out of left field, and I do, I'll be honest, I don't-
Out of the blue and by surprise are certain, everything has an origin, everything has a beginning, so I think to say that anything comes out of the blue, then I guess you could say that about any topic that ever comes up and gets put on the agenda. This isn't out of the blue, it was a determination made by the administration, and then, once the trust documents were located, whether you found them 100 years ago or now, those are the governing documents for the library. So the administration feels that that is the proper way to move forward with the library.
So then I'll ask you the same question I asked Mr. Bow, and I'm not going to, this will be the last question I ask. Where did it generate from? Somebody who just sat down and said, we're going to look at how the library is governed? Where, what caused the, I thought there was one episode or one incident that had caused-
We were having the admin code.
Okay.
So.
At that point, I'm going to call for the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor, you call for the question? And so, did someone-
Mr. Chairman, through you for Counselor Semenelli, could we invite his honor, the mayor, up to try and explain this in more fluent, fluently?
Do I have a second? Counselor Florio?
Good evening.
Counselor Semenelli?
Your honor, through you, Counselor Semenelli, so your position is exactly how you wrote in the code, and what we'll be voting on this evening?
Just pull that, just pull that mic towards you more.
My question was, is exactly what's written in the code, is what the mayor's presenting to us, is what does administration himself feel what we need to do?
That's correct. You want me to expand on that?
Yeah, I can explain it somewhat.
Yeah. So the, I feel that the Board of Trustees, having my wife on the Board of Trustees, my sister-in-law on the Board of Trustees, a lot of my friends that I put on the Board of Trustees are in the dark on a lot of issues in the libraries. And for a group of people to be governing the libraries and to be in the dark on all issues is alarming to me. They had no agenda at their meetings, never had an agenda that was, that they had got beforehand to discuss, that the agenda was driven by the director and the chairperson. And there were some issues there also regarding, they could not even get an executive session to talk about HR issues going on in the library. It was postponed and postponed, and the members on the Board of Library Trustees were unable to get information that they were requesting because there was not a meeting called. I'm not going to get into it this evening, because I don't want, if you want to, I will, I don't want it, I don't want it to be a contentious hearing, but there is a lot of misinformation coming out of there. You've had, right now, we have 10 positions posted on the city website, seven are from the libraries. Does that find, is that alarming? In the last few years, we've had 21 people leave the libraries that worked there. We've had exit interviews done with these people, and those exit interviews are not positive interviews. So I think it's time, there's no politics here, we've rebuilt libraries this board together. We spent taxpayers' dollars to rebuild the library. We spend taxpayers', there is no state library Board of Trustees that gives the city money for the libraries. They may dictate and give us laws, but they don't give us any money. They give us money, it's very small. The money is a taxpayer's money. We are elected by the taxpayers to represent the taxpayers. These buildings belong, these buildings are buildings that are in the city of Everett. We have a duty and responsibility to run the buildings correctly. That's what we're going to do. The Board of Trustees, Albert M. Paulin, has a trust. The trustees will continue to run that trust, and the trustees will continue to work with me. If they want to beautify it, if they want to buy more books, paint it any colors they want, run pizza nights, wine nights, whatever they want to do, story times, I'm all for it. And I think you are all for it. We're not stopping any of that stuff. They want to buy more materials, I'll put, you know me, I'll put it in the budget, we'll do it. If it's providing a service for kids, seniors, families, I will do it. There's no one checking, everyone told me to shut the chute down, business people and other people from the state, shut the library down, no one uses libraries anymore, right? They want to, this joke of a newspaper behind me wants to run an ad that I, you know, from 20 years ago when we were building, when we were building the high school, and they said something about the, you know, I said, I made a comment where I never went to the library, I went to the library, I went to the Snell Library many, many times, but today, this is our library today, but we are doing as many things we can possibly to keep our libraries going, and I'm going to continue on doing that. We should run the day-to-day out, we should be responsible for the employees that are working there, making sure they're being treated correctly. That's what I'll leave it at.
Counselor Capone?
I actually had a question for the director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. President, through you to the director. I know there's been a little confusion about whether or not human resources is involved in the process at all, and I think what I want to make sure is clear is that candidates are interviewed, they are screened by human resources, as best I know, you could speak to that better than I could. Human resources isn't divorced from the process.
No, they're intricate in the process. But, you know, it's different because we have a different human resources director than we did when I started, so the processes, you know, I'm using the same process that I used. I just want to address something. When I took over the library, my first email to the human services director that we were down, at least seven positions, okay? We were short-staffed from the beginning. There is an agenda, the agenda's published every month. Most of the trusts, well, at least four of the trustees visit the library regularly. Sandy visits-
Months a week, Sandy?
Talks to staff, they are, we have the residents of Everett that visit the library, they visit every day, or at least once a week, okay? They have relationships with the staff, the staff constantly communicates with the trustees, and the trustees are in constant communication with me. Have we had some staff issues? We've had a lot of staff issues. We are perpetually short-staffed. I have emails, those are in public documents, those are in the minutes of just about every meeting that we have, okay? The trustees have recently tried to address some of that, making some wage increases, but, you know, when you're short-staffed and you're asking people to cover shifts and things like that, there's going to be some frustration, there's going to be all kinds of things. You know, Kathleen is off-duty, she just had to run down and cover a desk so that we could send somebody home, because I was supposed to be there, and it's 9 o'clock at night. So there is some issues at the libraries, there have been, they were before I started, where the trustees are doing a lot to address them. Personnel committee just came out with a proposal, I think that that will help alleviate some of the issues. Some of the staff, you know, these exit interviews, I would be interested to know how that worked. But a lot of people, if you look at the staff, every month, we say who's coming and going, who retired, who got hit by a bus, literally. We've had some retirements, we've had a lot of people who are retirees that come to join us. We had someone leave and come back already, leave and come back and is leaving again as soon as she sells her house. Yeah, that happens. We have a lot of high school kids that work for us that leave to go to college. We have a lot of college kids that work for us that leave to get jobs. We have a lot of retirees that decide to actually retire after a period of time. Pat Els is here, she's a very well-respected person in the community. She came back to help me with the libraries and help guide younger staff members, our new librarians who may even be older. She knows what goes on at the library, we're an open book, we're very transparent with that. So, you know, personally, I resent some of that stuff, and I want to assure you all that a lot of the trustees are in the building a lot, and they're very, very good about letting me know that the bathrooms aren't clean, that someone's unhappy or stuff like that. And Sandy is one of them, and you can certainly talk to her, she's in at least once a week, and she makes it a point to talk to a lot of the staff members. I know that Michelle's in, used to be at least once a week, she talks to a lot of the staff members, she has a running commentary with Kathleen over Game of Thrones, she talks to almost all the staff members. Maybe a little too much, as a matter of fact, no. But, you know, it's wonderful that, Dottie Gomez is another trustee who's in at least once a week. But, you know, it's wonderful that, Dottie Gomez is another trustee who's in at least once a week. So, there were quite a few of the trustees are in. They keep tabs on what goes on down to the furnishings, literally down to the furnishings. Sandy came in one day, and I think I told the mayor the story. You know, I said, you know, the kids aren't using the Macs anymore, and I don't know. And she looked out and she said, could be the chairs. And we had these little stump chairs, and we changed the chairs, and sure enough, something that you look at every day. But the trustees are integrally involved in, in the day-to-day running of, of the library. And rest assured, they would let me know if they felt that something wasn't quite right, or they wanted to see us move in a different direction. So, I just wanted to address that. I'm sorry. What was your question?
No, no, that's, I wanted to give you the opportunity to address it because, um, the other thing is, I, I think that the full-time positions, they're union too, anyway. It's not like there's lawlessness running around the Wild West.
No, we're, there's no law.
The library, the library, the Wild West.
No, there are, there are a lot of rules. There are a lot of rules, you know, the full-time positions are union positions. They need to be posted. They're posted internally. There are rules govern, governing that. There are rules, you know, it's a very complicated process. And HR is involved in that, and oftentimes, if I'm not sure, it's a new situation for me because I haven't been director for a long time. You know, I, I do send up emails to HR to get clarification whenever I have any question like that. So, if, are you, do you want an overview of?
No, 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 that's, that's fine. I just, and the, the last question I have for you is, because you're the director of the library, so you see all of this stuff, um, more intensely than anyone else. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about the trust and the will and the funds and the purpose, but I want everyone to make sure that they understand the trustees pre-existed that trust. Their function pre-existed that trust. And from your perspective as a director, we would be, I think, relegating them to buying furniture as opposed to the types of everyday decisions that they make now that makes the library what it is. And it's a function that that body's been doing for a hundred and thirty-nine years. This didn't just happen last week. So, I want to make sure that everybody understands, from your perspective, that, that's one piece of this code. Like I said, there are other things in the code that I have, I have some questions about, and that's for another day. But the biggest piece by far is the impact that this is going to have on the library. And you, as a director, are probably the best person to speak to how you see that change. And that's, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to explain how you see that impacting the caliber of work if you reduce the trustees' functions.
The trustees have an immense impact on the way public libraries function, not only here in Everett, but throughout the state. They, they play a huge role in representing the community and making sure the community is represented in library services. They also do a lot of outreach to the business community and fundraising, and, and that's what, they, I can't even stress how important trustees are in the day-to-day function. And because you have twelve people and not one person, okay? The chances of representing a, a broader base of the community with broader skill sets, with broader experiences are extremely relevant and resonate in, in what you see. I mean, a lot of the changes that you've seen over the last two years in, in terms of the programming, I mean, one of our trustees is, is in early childhood education. So, we have a sensory storytime for children with autism. One of our trustees is, is very interested in author visits, so it was actually Sandy that did the author visits. One of our trustees is extremely interested in the history of Everett. So, you know, we, we worked with you guys. You guys gave us a good amount of money to get our equipment up to date so that we're able to do a lot of the local history. We went from probably being one of the worst libraries in the consortium, maybe in, in the state, to be honest, in terms of our local history, um, collection, to really, you know, almost one of the top, you know, and that's going to happen. We just got a, um, a small grant to assess our local history and to make recommendations going forward. That was driven by a trustee. You know, I'm the director. I'm, you know, every day I come in and it's like, which bathroom's broken? I just got a message that the bathroom's leaking at Parlin. How many bathrooms? We have sixteen bathrooms. They all need toilet tissue. Um, someone has to call the facilities department. I mean, that's, sometimes you get bogged down in the day-to-day stuff. The trustees are the, the ones that keep the vision going. You work together to create a vision where you want to be in two years, where you want to be in five years, where you want to be in twenty years. And the trustees are perpetually keeping us on track and providing us with the community import, input to make sure that the libraries are relevant and serving the community in years to come, not just today.
You know, I don't mean to interrupt, but one of the main topics that had come up is HR, and the mayor had come and spoke about some discrepancies. We had, it's going back to talking about how the city finances these positions, and although HR is involved, they don't have the full capacity that an HR department would have. Now, if we go back to how the board operates, we did observe some meetings, and there were a lot of open-meeting law issues. There were a lot of parliamentary procedure issues, but when the mayor spoke about the executive session, that indeed was an employment issue. And those sessions are supposed to take place within three days of that notice. Sessions haven't taken place. They still haven't taken place, and they would need to. That's a liability on the city. These are things that the city needs to control to make sure that the city is, is protecting itself and its residents. All the things that the director spoke about, those are important things, and a lot of those duties will still reside with the director and the board. But we even had a situation where a board member applied for a position at the library when that wasn't, when there was a conflict. That wasn't the right thing to do, and nobody on the board could advise them of that. Nobody reached out to the city. That's an HR function, and these things need to be held by the city. So, we make sure we show ourselves from liability.
I have to interrupt you here, okay?
If I can interrupt you at, at times, too.
Yes, you absolutely can.
You did bring up bathrooms, and I've been here for quite a while, so I might.
I'm sorry. Can I just, I just want to address that. That did happen, okay? So, the job was posted. The job was posted, went through the normal posting things. And a trustee among, among other people, applied for a job, okay? She applied by sending a resume indicating, is it, and I don't have it with me, it's down in a file at work, indicating that she was a trustee. She sent it, all, all applicants go through HR. So, they, everyone who applies goes through the city HR department. If you're a volunteer and you come in and want to volunteer with me and you're over the year, over the age of eighteen, I send you up to the human resources department because there are queries and, you know, emergency contact information. HR does all that. She applied through HR, um, and it clearly said in her application and on her cover letter, as I recall, that she was a trustee and a friend, and listed her experience. We got, we got those, we got those applications down from HR, okay? And we prioritized, I'll be honest, we prioritized, um, by internal candidates and Everett residents, as has been our practice. And so, we, we interviewed quite a few candidates. There were two rounds of candidates. And the way that I interview in the library is my administrative assistant usually goes through the packets, and she makes sure that people have the minimum qualifications, okay? And then we sit down and, and she talks about, you know, who we're going to interview. She, she basically does an additional screening for me. And Everett residents always, even if a person might not be totally what we're looking for, we may interview an Everett resident in the hopes that they may want to apply for another job. So, during the course of an interview, we might suggest that they apply for another job. So, what happens is, is we receive the, the resumes. Pat and I do an additional screening and an additional interview. Then it goes to a committee, okay? I hire by committee because I know that I'm not necessarily the person that's going to be working with these people. Pat, Pat Els is here. She can tell you about that. She's been on the committees for the children's, um, library, and Kathleen had to go back.
Do you see what's happening tonight? This is what happens at the board meetings at the library, too. This is the director of the libraries. And she runs the board meetings at the library. And this goes on and on like this at those board meetings, too, the interruptions, the fact that somebody can't get the whole thought out. But I need to, I need to impress upon this council that the lack of an executive session, when advised by my office, by Colleen Mahia's office as solicitor, and the fact that one hasn't happened yet, hopefully should alarm you. These are really important issues.
Excuse me, we, we had about thirty seconds for a five-minute rule.
You were there when it was scheduled.
It's supposed to be scheduled three days out. When's it scheduled for?
Excuse me.
Mr. President, would you excuse our guest? We had a committee of the whole.
Excuse our guest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Favorable action on your honor.
Second.
Can we accept the committee report?
On the favor? Aye.
I'll oppose. I'd have it. Accept the committee report. Do a roll call vote.
On the code.
Favorable action. Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Mike Hazy?
No.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Apolitano?
No.
Counsel Semenelli? Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Six yeas, four nays. You have passed.
Mr. President, uh, there's a piece here, uh,
Counsel Matuski?
Having to do with the mayor, that Councilman Mike Hazy sponsored.
What number is that?
Number nineteen. If we could take that from the agenda where the mayor is in the chamber.
No, no, the other one. You wanted the, uh, the casino one, yeah. What's the casino? It wasn't that. Was it? No, that isn't the casino one, is it?
These calendars are a little, oh, I don't know, the numbers, they went.
No, like the casino one, there was a different one there. No.
Nineteen is the chi, city charter.
No, no, the, the one that's, twenty-seven. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah. Most should take, uh, item number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. I'd have it. Can you read number twenty-seven, please, on the agenda?
Item number twenty-seven, Mr. President, is a resolution by Counsel Michael Mike Hazy that his honor the mayor and the CFO explain what the city will do if the casino does not open on time.
Counsel Mike Hazy.
I'd like to invite CFO, if he's here. Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I guess the question is, casino in the event was even delayed two or three months, how is the effect on our overall budget? If the money from our budget was inclusive, was included into the next year's budget? That's why we'll look at that.
Yeah, so, so none of the revenues, uh, from the resort, um, are included in this year's budget?
None of it is?
None of it.
None? Okay, so that won't affect, one thing in the city, last year, we had to add, obviously, the money, the fund of the extra money, thirteen, or twelve, five, we had to the budget to reduce the taxes.
That's correct.
So, we'd be in better shape this year for taxes that we won't need to draw from that money?
Well, we also used about twelve million last year in free cash to, uh, offset the schools, um, in one calendar year, too, so, uh, we do have some.
We spent a lot of money last year. We only got twenty-five million. That's, that's what I'm saying. Will this affect us if we don't have that extra revenue coming from them?
Well, we, we, um, we, you know, we haven't set the tax rate yet. Um, and, as you know, we do that in November.
Yeah.
We will have probably nearly, I don't know, I think it's north of six, seven million in free cash. We have a decent amount of stabilization. We are working on our budget now to try to trim that as much as we can. Probably will be some positions that have merged, some cuts. Uh, we're not backfilling, um, lots of positions in different departments right now, public works, police, fire, other places. So, you know, we're, uh, we're hoping that the, uh, the, you know, we'll keep the, the budget as low as possible. The schools, I know, have reached out to all of us looking for an additional six million dollars. You know, I wish I could say yes, but I don't believe I can. Uh, this is, you know, as you remember back when Rich Fiske was the CFO, even now with Eric Demus, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, we're always maybe how tough as he is. So, we're seeing that. You know, we still have ongoing, you know, of course litigation with the power plant and, but we do feel, I mean, so, so none of our revenues from the resort are in the budget. Just to answer that question as simple as possible, you are right. We, you, we did use twelve and a half million of that upfront gift that we got, that thirty million dollar upfront gift that we got, not taxes. It was just that upfront payment they gave us. We did use that to fill a shortfall, um, but we used that on, I think, um, on bonding of, uh, a, a long-term debt. So, we did supplant the budget and use those funds.
In, in the event we don't, you know, you don't have the extra money, where will we be making cuts?
Well, right now, I'm looking, I'm looking everywhere.
I mean, there's, there's got to be, uh, that year where the, where it stops.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I agree.
I mean, you know, like, for instance, I don't know what we lost in retirements, but we just put eight firemen, you know, so we add another eight.
Eight police, yeah.
So, we add another million to the budget tonight.
Right, so, uh, we, we still the same number, so that's.
There are, there's retirements and stuff.
Yeah, that didn't change our, our, our numbers. Still, um,
Yeah, it's just like.
Same, same, same amount of money that was in the budget last year for, for bodies.
Yeah.
Those eight just replaced.
All right. So, we're.
And we are going to get six paid, six or seven hopefully paid from the resort. But like I said, if it doesn't open up, yeah, yeah, but, uh, but as you know, I mean, yeah, it, you know, there's, you can't, you can't find a company unsuitable. You can only find people unsuitable.
Oh, but the, you know, it's just, it's just, it's worrisome. All of a sudden, now, two months out, you have to train the staff. They're still hiring people.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it could open up in August or September.
Imagine when you have, you own a, a local paper that's fighting against it the whole way through. I mean, you have a paper that we advertise, some people advertise in, and they've been fighting the resort from coming to the City of Everett for the last two, three years. You wonder whose, whose pocket they're in, right? And they're fighting against the City of Everett, where we're trying to, a, a development that's going to generate thirty million dollars in taxes, ten million in the park lot across the street, and estimated ten to twelve million in hotel and food taxes, the first year. That's our estimate we're going to get. We finally got those numbers. I haven't released that to you guys yet. So, you're talking fifty million dollars from one development, first year. We always talk about twenty-five, twenty-six, the ancillary, and we have a person, gentleman behind me, runs the newspaper, that's been hammering the crap out of the Encore, right? Hammering them, trying to kill them at, at meetings in the convention center, talking negative about the project. This is our livelihood. This is people, people, our, our residents are work, fifty-eight hundred residents are working. Maybe not all fifty-eight hundred ever, working there, but there's about two, three hundred already hired by them. You know, so.
So.
Don't believe everything you read.
Well, it's not that something I read, it's just something I'm just living here and do.
You know, so I, I went to the game of commission, I went to the game of commission meetings. I know Counsel McGlaughlin was there also. Our, our corporate counsel was there. We've had conversations with them.
So, I get up every day and I turn that thing on, hoping to see they got a license, believe it.
Yeah, I, I know you do. I know you do. One way or the other, they're not, the state of Massachusetts cannot afford to this, this, this facility to not open, uh, and open on time. I, I feel that there's going to be a heavy levy against them, and there's going to, you know, they, they've got rid of already Jim Stern, who ran security. He's gone. They're probably going to ask maybe for another one or two. Who knows? But they can't find the whole company unsuitable. Thousands of people make up that brand.
I'd like to, thank you. I'd like to, for anybody who has any questions, so.
Yes, I'll say, counselor. Counsel Mike, uh, McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. I echo the comments of Mayor Di Maria. My question to you, mayor, is thirty days after the casino opens, which I do echo Counsel Mike Hazy's sentiment, which is, it just seems hard that it will open in June, maybe open the delay, or whatever the case might be, it's going to open. It's going to open under Encore, no doubt. Whether thirty days later, they're going to hand the City of Everett, hand-deliver the City of Everett a check, or is there a process the state gets involved in that has to streamline the funds to the City of Everett? And will we see the whole thirty million dollars? Because I'm hearing different mixed, mixed reviews on the process of obtaining the payment in lieu of taxes. As we've had ceremonies here, and you've invited us in the last three years during the check process, uh, payments, is that going to be the same process, or is there a different stream?
Yeah.
For that thirty million?
It's a little different, um, but it still comes in a timely manner. But it does come, it's, it's through a one-twenty-one A, uh, so it does come through the state first and then to us.
But does it get delivered at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year, mayor? Because I'm hearing that it, again, these are.
So, I mean, meal taxes, hotel taxes, parking fees, all that gets, you know, monthly to the city, quarterly. The one-twenty-one A, let me get you the exact language. I'll, I'll send it to you. Eric is not here. He's.
That's okay, no problem. But I think it's something that maybe we need to discuss, because I don't know if that, what the process is. I think we can discuss that.
But regardless, we still get it in that, we still get it in the.
In the calendar year.
In the budget, yeah.
So we'll be able to apply it to the tax or the budget at some point.
We would come in as a revenue source, if we were to not have a use for it in the budget, it would probably go entirely offset the budget. So we would say, we're gonna put a third in stabilization, a third in free cash, and a third to the budget, whatever, you know. That's something I wanna work with you all, that anyways.
The five million in lieu of taxes, I mean, in public safety, will that come to the city of Everett?
That's all part of the pilot.
Through the one-twenty-one A?
It's all part of the one-twenty-one A.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know we can talk about this after.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Matuski, and then Council Apolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, you know, what's been puzzling me since, you know, I voted in favor of the casino, and I really like what I have seen, but the communication between when Encore, both, we'll just say Encore at this point, because win's out of the ballgame, I have never, I didn't even get even a Christmas card. I mean, that sounds funny to you.
No, to make you feel good, I didn't even get one either, so.
Well, I think that's a lack of consideration. Now, if it wasn't for me insisting on a tour for Councilman Simonelli.
Yeah.
And Marquezey and McKinnon, we'd be, I mean, I mean, come on, I don't get it. Are we out of, out of the realm of this thing?
Honestly, it's a very heavily regulated industry, and that's, that's.
We're the city government, okay?
I know, I, listen, I.
I find it very frustrating, okay?
I feel your pain.
I, as state representative, I went to every hearing.
You were there, you had all the hearings, you spoke in favor of them, and we.
All right, that's what a sick father.
And I think the city, all, all the residents appreciated your support on it.
There's just something lacking with this.
Well, they've been, they've gone through.
Council, you know, excuse me, you know, May fourth, there's a tour for all of us.
Well, I just found that out tonight, come on. What is this, Ropper Room? Come on!
No, I mean, in fairness to them, they've been, they.
In fairness to what? Not to me.
Council Matuski, you're from the line, correct?
I represent that area longer than.
The Monsanto was a contaminated wasteland.
I know what it was.
Leaching into the Boston Harbor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying that.
That company spent nearly seventy million dollars.
I'm talking about their public relations.
Well, you know, I will echo the comments to them.
All right, okay, that's number one.
I bet they know how you feel.
I appreciate that, because I really, you know, if it wasn't for that tour we took three months ago, and I was quite impressed, but I, you know, I just don't get it. You know, in any other city, you would be treated with a little more respect. I understand Somerville's there every other week, the elected officials of Somerville.
I don't believe that's true.
I'm just saying this, Mr. President, because I don't think we've been treated, I haven't been, that's for sure, and I know a couple of other councilmen that feel the same exact way, so you're supposed to be our spokesperson for this, for the city government. Okay, the other thing I wanted to bring up, we're not gonna slant, now, what do you got, thirty-two million coming when this casino is actually open?
Well, as the pilot is twenty-five, and then you have meals and hotel taxes.
But there's not gonna be any money grabs from the school department like there was last year? Any, any of that?
Those days are over.
I hope so, because I'm not voting for that anymore. Those days are gone.
Yeah.
You've got a budget, you've gotta stick to it.
Well, we have a, we have a better working relationship these days.
Well, I'm hoping that the gaming commission rules that the Encore people are suitable. You know, I really disappointed with their public relations, I mean, you know, no offense to anybody, okay? But I've been around a long time, I know what good public relations, that's my business. That is my business.
I'm not gonna defend anyone, because we all.
Well, no, it's my opinion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, right, no, I know.
I'm just telling you how I feel.
I will let them know, and I think they already do know.
I told you this, time and time again.
Gentlemen, the question on the agenda is.
Mr. President.
About the casino being up on time, being opened up.
All right, so.
And the effect it will have if it doesn't open.
This should probably be the last chance before June twenty-third, maybe the mayor can talk to these people, I did enjoy the tour, but I mean, it's ridiculous, I don't know if you gentlemen feel the same way as I do, but it's a little over the top, and I don't know why, I have no clue.
Honestly, it's the regulations, it's a heavily regulated industry.
Heavy regulations to invite people that are in city government to view, to be part of something?
Well, it's not even the.
I know, very, I know, as little of, I, about the parking lot, the whole nine yards. All right.
Okay, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Council Apolitano.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
First of all, I'm glad to hear that you're planning for worst case, you're not budgeting in the revenue from the casino until it's actually coming in the door. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, yes.
Good, because I'd be more concerned if I.
Right, there'll be no budget that says ten million is gonna be used for the casino revenue in this year's budget.
And by the time the revenue does start coming in, we'll already be at the point where we're getting ready to fix the tax rate, so we'll be through the budget process.
Right, the budget we approved, and then we set the tax rate in November, so, you know, hopefully, you know, it opens in June, I mean, I fail very firmly to say it's gonna open up in June, June twenty-first, whatever it may be, and feel that we will be receiving some monies prior to setting the tax rate, and if we want, remember, we still have ample supply in stabilization, free cash, in other funds that we've created, so we still have money to offset the budget if we'd like to. But I am working right now to try to keep that budget at a low, low percent increase, you know, a single-digit increase, that's the goal, even a lower than, you know, lower than five, six percent.
No, I think if you're, if you're not banking for the money at this point while you're creating the budget, then the money come in, it becomes gravy. I mean, I don't wanna see the city slip in any way, we know this, we have one more tough year, we're in it, coming into it, I don't wanna see the city slip in any way, shape, form, and that includes education.
We're in a tough year because of the power plants. Remember, they're on their last year, their TIF, you know, they go from, you know, they, you know, we've been evaluating them, we've been taxing them at fifteen million, I mean, you notice how they've been so, such a great community partner, they've been at every event and supporting everything and donating money to everything, but the true fact is, you know, their assessed value is not gonna be at three hundred, a hundred million dollars, it's gonna go up to one-point-two-three billion dollars, which they spent on that development. The taxes are gonna go up, and that's gonna help the residents of the city of Everett immensely, and that pilot is over in two thousand twenty. So.
Well, again, like I said, I don't wanna see the city slip in any way, shape, or form, and that includes education, but, and at the same time, I know this is something that's come up, I mean, repeatedly, we need some tax relief. So when we get this money coming in, I think we really need to take a good, hard look, and I hope that's your intent, to make sure that, one, we're not losing ground, we're not taking anything away from people that are now comfortable with the services that the city provides, but also, our commercial side needs some relief.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's one.
But they did get relief for the last five years. Commercial taxpayers, for the last, this is the year they got a little bump, the last five years, they weren't paying any, they were really, the residential taxpayers, you know, were really feeling the blunt of the taxes, you know, it just, it's, that's, it happens, right?
But what, what we assess one large company and what we assess a barber shop on the side street.
I agree.
You know, that's where, that's where, when I talk about relief, I'm talking about the small sole proprietor. That is struggling just to keep his doors open, that's what I'm concerned. They're the ones that need the relief, one way or another. And, you know, as far as, and, you know, I know this isn't direct as much as you, but as far as exposure to the council and information coming from Encore, you know, for the last two and a half years, they've had monthly meetings with both the council presidents, whoever was at the time, and the representatives of those, of Ward Six and Ward One. Now, those meetings were conducted on a monthly basis with the intent to provide feedback back to the council, and, you know, I.
Do they still do those meetings?
I don't believe they do now, because now they've stopped, but, but at the same time, there was feedback provided regularly all last year, okay? Whether you choose to look it up or not, that's not my problem. But the thing is that they have provided information, and they also have conducted large-scale tours for the city council. Which unfortunately, had very minimal.
They've been in somewhat of a turmoil, I would say. I mean, as you can imagine, their CFO, their CEO and founder is gone, and possibly the new CEO may have some issues, I don't know, you know, they've had different issues happening in the company, a lot of anxiety, I think, with some of them, you know, but they are continually working, hiring and getting that facility open, and, you know, the contractor, stuff of construction is, you know, that, turn that building over within, you know, in a timely manner before, you know, the opening, so I will relay the message to them, I do meet with them on a, on every Wednesday we meet. Maybe, maybe I'll try to do is if I can invite maybe one of you to the meet, maybe I'll try to get Council Delasola to that meeting, if he can, I know he works during the day, or just, our meetings are more about roads, you know, opening day, you know, job, what job numbers are, what phase are they at completion, you know, where the parking lot across the street, the management of the park, you know, you know, it's, it's opening day, opening dates and all that, once I get all that information, we all know the dates, I'm sure they're gonna be, they're gonna be sending those invites to all of us, and letting you know.
They actually hire, they actually start training the first group of internal candidates two weeks from today. I know that to be a fact, because I know several individuals who start working for them two weeks from today, all Everett residents.
You guys are great.
And all getting paid significantly more than what they do on their full-time jobs.
That's great.
Currently. So again, we're all at the hopes that this turns around. You know, I was having a conversation this weekend at an Easter dinner with some, with some family members, and they asked me why Everett were so hot in this, and I told them very bluntly, city of Everett has been screwed out of these kind of deals for decades, we're due.
Yeah.
We're, actually, we're way overdue.
Yeah.
So this is something that, we're getting all the benefits of our proximity to Boston, and don't have to share any of the wealth with anybody else. You know, I remember years ago, I was having a conversation about the conditions of the Monsanto plant, you know.
That was leaching into the Boston Harbor, I mean, that was a super fun site that was paid for by a private company.
You couldn't raise cockroaches down there, because it was hazardous to them, so I mean, let's face it.
The thing we, the thing we have to work on as a group is transportation, is how do we get our people in and out of Boston without using, using their cars? How do we create a reliable transit system?
Hopefully, hopefully you're aware that this body has been asking for repeated information from traffic around this, and I can't speak for the, for the group as a whole, but the consensus is, there's a little bit, way too much reliable, relying on what Encore is gonna do, there's gonna be a learning curve going on here.
No, so I've had those meetings with the state police, the city, and our police department and our transportation folks, and we will have more of those meetings with the gaming commission facilitating this as soon as, you know, their, their work is hopefully come to a completion, but, you know, they're working, they have a good, solid plan, I know, Officer Gaff was here, I wasn't, I wasn't able to be here the night that he presented, but it is, they have a really good plan for opening, not only opening day, but opening month, opening year. It's gonna be, it's gonna be heavy traffic, as we know, for a good amount of period of time, and, you know.
It's gonna impact the entire city.
It, it will, but we're gonna, you know, they'll be, they'll be on the hook for a long time to make sure that we keep traffic flowing, with as many police officers we need, and many intersections that we need to have, you know, those officers working to make sure traffic is flowing, that people still can do their, you know, normal, get to school, get to work, and get, you know, what they need to get to during the day. You'll see traffic impacts at nights and weekends, we knew that from the beginning. That's why I'm aggressively working with the transit people now, with Nelson Nygaard and Stan Tech, to create a twenty-four-hour, you know, rapid bus, you know, transit system, pretty much like, almost like trikots that we used to have, you know, coming down the city streets of Everett. We gotta, we gotta tie, we're tying that second phase now to Lower Broadway, we're working on the Civil Line extension now, we got shuttles, gonna be running from the Civil Line into the square, into the wind site, so that'd be great for residents, we'll use that to connect to the Civil Line. There's a lot of good stuff happening, and what I want is maybe Jay Monty to come back, maybe have a meeting, maybe bring in the consultants to just show you what, what is going on when it comes to transportation improvements, I think that would be beneficial.
Sooner would be better.
Great.
Than later.
Thank you.
If I ask at the end, if you could stick around for item number thirty-one as well?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council McGlaughlin, seems to be the last speaker.
Mr. President, I just wanted to touch base on the fact, to just let my colleagues know that we have, in January, decided that there would be no more monthly meetings with the council president and the two ward councils, that Mr. Taco was gonna come and give a monthly or quarterly update to the council as a whole, so that everybody could be on the same page, and I, to be honest, I haven't been on the site in probably a year from, since my last site tour. The fact is, John Taco, whose regulations government for them is always available, he can always pick up the phone and call John, he always takes our calls and is work with us. I just wanted to touch base on the fact that we're not having meetings any longer. I think that John has done a good job coming here and talking to the body as a whole, so that everybody was on the same page, and trying to keep everybody informed. I had the opportunity to attend three days of public hearing at the convention center, Council Hanlon was there one day, learned a lot, a real lot, from those three days at the Mass Gaming Commission last week, but I think that the information is coming as quickly as it can to our colleagues and to myself, Council Capone, and I think that John Taco has done as good a job as he can at the situation that they were dealt with a year ago that nobody foresaw coming, so I don't want anybody to think that there's information that we're holding, and we're not passing along to our colleagues. Council Matuski talked about his tour, he's been on the site later than I have been, it's been a year since I was on the site, so you've seen it sooner. Council, President Delasola as well, so I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't get out into the newspapers, that we're holding information from our colleagues, that they're doing quarterly meetings with the council as a whole, so that everybody's on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if we, if we.
Thank you, Mr.
Please ask the mayor to stay, because there are a couple other pieces.
Okay.
Would you just call him after this piece?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Council Marquezey?
Much as we refer back to the sponsor, all right?
Mr. President, I just wanna make a statement.
On the motion?
The May fourth meeting, this is what I'm talking about. Now, if you didn't say, now, May fourth, it's only a week away, but, you know, I have to make plans to attend something, okay? This is what I'm talking about. The thing is opening in eight weeks, and we don't, you know, certain members don't have the, I'm not asking the mayor, he's not here for that. And the other, I know what your piece, Councilman, but I'm gonna say my piece, too, okay? I find it offensive that a thing, a building as big as this, I don't know who else knew about May fourth. This is not acceptable. We, this is a big deal here, we gotta be, I wanna be involved, and I feel like I'm not, okay? And as far as the Ward Six and the Ward One, I am a councilman at large, I represent every ward and every precinct in this city, and if somebody uses that, it's my ward routine, that's not the way I'm gonna operate anymore. I'm at large, and I'm an expert in Ward One, expert, there isn't a house down the line I've never been in.
Well, Council, I don't think anybody's holding back information?
Why, how come you, you know about May fourth and nobody else does?
Guys, we're speaking.
Well, I don't wanna get in a conflict.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
But.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
But, I'm, I'm gonna end it right there. I'm not gonna make a comment that I love to make right now, I'm not gonna make a comment.
Make a motion, refer back to sponsor, and also, if we could, stick to what's in front of us. We talked 20 minutes on something to make any sense. The mayor, the mayor addressed the piece and the information that we needed, no need to ask 35 questions on it.
Everybody's passionate about this, but the question was, the delay, and that's it.
No.
So your, your motion was to extend it?
Refer back to sponsor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Excuse the mayor and...
He's got a couple of these.
Can we take item number 31, please?
Excuse me?
Item 21, please.
21?
31.
31 is made first in motion.
They're doing it second.
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilor Capone made a motion for 21 to be read. Thank you.
So it's 21, second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed for 21 again.
Item number 21, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Steven Simonelli that his honor the mayor or someone from his office appear at the next government operations, excuse me, government operations, public service, public safety committee meeting to explain why the city took away 19 public spots in Everett Square parking lot behind the post office for city-owned vehicles. And then this was up postponed from the last meeting to invite the mayor to speak.
Councilor Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, through Councilman Simonelli. The mayor's already took the signs down, and they're back, and everything's okay.
Thank you. Councilor Capone wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the mayor. I know that when you have the parking spots, you try to free them up for the people, and we appreciate that, and I know that was the council's concern. The other concern we have, though, is now we have 19 vehicles that are going home. I know we're always trying to, you know, keep things tight. So when you have vehicles that are driving around, even if they're local, you're gonna have wear and tear on them, you're gonna end up using the gas, we're gonna have to replace them sooner. So those are all things we wanna try to avoid. And I know you try to do the best you can with that, and that was the concern, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, to the extent that we can avoid, that we wanna avoid it. I don't know if there's any other alternatives, I don't know if there's any city property to put them on.
So we're, we, we've, we've put some files out to Boston Coach and to Mellon Bank. We had a call in, right now Gateway, we, you know, we, we had, we, we, we had a call to them also. So we're working the bigger parking lot people to see if we can, because I was trying to appease.
I know you were.
My councilman, and then I wanna appease you also, so, so I have those calls out. I'm hoping, I think, I think Mellon Bank's gonna be okay with us.
Okay.
Keeping the 19 cars down there. It was just more now about liability insurance and that kind of stuff, so.
Right, no, and I get that, and I know you're trying to appease the council.
Yep.
It's like when you try to fix one problem, it creates another one.
Exactly.
You know that.
Yes.
So that, that was a concern, just wanna make sure that if there were another alternative, because the other thing too, that, I mean, we don't even wanna get into this stuff, but if you, if it's local, it's probably not a big deal, it's de minimis benefit, but if you have someone who lives in another community, now it kinda could turn into a taxable situation for them, where you have to get a 1099 because it's a benefit.
The good thing is, I, I think all the vehicles, I think I except for two, leave the city, all stay in the city. Yeah, so, but you made that, you made that, you asked me, and I wanted to, you know, work the square, make sure the spots were available, but then we started kinda just had a, I was talking to, who was my office, it might have been Doc, and we just thought about who has some big parking lots in the city, which is, let's call them up and let's...
I, I appreciate that, thank you for looking into that.
No problem.
I have no other questions.
No other questions? Counselor, what do you wanna do with this piece?
Sponsor, refer back to sponsor.
All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it.
Is there a make, can we take item number 31?
It's add, I'm also looking to see if we can do some shuttling from Mellon for city hall employees. Working with Boston Coach possibly to get rid, open up some spaces in the parking lot.
Councilor Palatino?
I'd like to take item number 31 off the calendar.
All in favor, take 31?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, please read 31, the agenda, please.
Item 31, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Pili and Palatino, be resolved that the Everett City Council requests information from the mayor's office on why the State of the City address was changed to a virtual broadcast, and when will the virtual broadcast be given?
Councilor Palatino?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I wanna apologize, my initial draft, when I sent this through, was a little more aggressive. In hindsight, it wasn't the right course of action, so I just wanna get information.
Yeah.
Residents ask us, they do, they have gotten used to the fact that we're getting a continuous bit of information on, on how the city's going, especially where we have so many things happening all at once.
Right.
So what, what prompted your decision to avoid, I mean, not avoid, but not do the State of the City address, and, and what, what is this virtual broadcast, what is that gonna entail?
So I, I did a real full read of the city charter, and, which I probably should've done probably six years ago, maybe, when it was firstly done, but I, I'll be transparent and honest, I saw, I did a real from front and back, so ask me any question with the city charter, I can answer, answer it for you right now tonight, if you like.
Page 35, sub-paragraph 2, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so it states there that, I believe, 30 days before the submission of the budget, we have to give the city council and the school committee and superintendent a financial forecast. So since we changed the term of mayor from a two-year to four-year term, you know, you do a State of the City when you first get in office, the first hundred days? Second year is, second year, so it's really not a State of the City. The third year is a midterm, when you all run, so I would definitely do an address, a midterm address, because we have a whole new group of people, and, you know, maybe not, maybe it's all of you, and hopefully it is all of you. And so we have midterm, and now we'll do a midterm address. And then you'll have two years after that, if I re-elected, we'll have a State, you know, inauguration. So you really have, you know, year two, and, you know, you have a couple of years there where you don't have to do a State of the City, right? So I thought of something that, when we did those off-years, we'd have it here, and we'd have a, you know, a school committee and the city council and everyone and department heads, and maybe my family. And sometimes I wouldn't even, you know, of course, my wife and my children, but I wouldn't, I think one year my dad went to his bowling league, you know, I mean, and I said, Dad, you know what? He, you know, it's something he loved, and I said, don't worry about it, it's, we'll see on ECTV. So I wasn't pushing people to come anymore, not pushing, but you know, you weren't really asking, and you saw the crowds, it wasn't really... And with today's technology, and with ECTV, and with YouTube, and, and all these other, you know, I said to myself, and, and I really wanna do a more in-depth conversation about the city. I don't wanna just do a, a broad stroke address, right? I wanna get into affordable housing, because there's been comments here, public comment periods about affordable housing. There've been comments about transportation, there've been comments about workforce housing, there's been comments about public safety, our street safe, you know, budgeting, finances. So I've chosen, I think we have about 22 topics, that we're gonna give an in-depth, in-depth conversation about, and I'm gonna do those as addresses, and we're gonna, I'm gonna tape it all at once, probably gonna be a day or two of taping, and then I'm gonna just break them up in, in, in headings. So, you know, and then you'll have them all at your, at your leisure, so you can go on your computer anytime you want and watch affordable housing, or if you wanna talk about inclusionary, in and of affordable housing, there'll be inclusionary zone, and there'll be, there'll be 40B housing, there'll be 40, there'll be lips, I'm gonna explain as much as I can about every subject, and people can just click on what they really wanna listen to. For the education of their children, if it's the safety of the neighborhoods, if it's, you know, safe streets initiatives. So I just thought, why not do something that's more in-depth? Talk about, you know, the Mall and the River, you know, the, the environment, you know, climate resiliency, what are we doing in the City of Everett for climate, climate resiliency, right? Do you ever think of the mayor, Kyle DeMare, ever do something about climate resiliency in the City of Everett, right? Stormwater management. But all these issues, I wanna tell you what we're doing. And I can't do that in a State of the City. And, and I wanna, and with today's tech, I'm gonna use today's technology, I'm gonna use the ability to, you know, as you know, I'm trying to put City Hall virtually online for everything, so you're gonna be able to pay every bill, yet we won't, this group right here, maybe Mike is a little younger than us, Anthony's a little younger than us, but me, 45 years old, I'm still, I still come in, you know, write a check and do all that stuff, I don't use apps, and I don't do online banking, and a lot of older people do that stuff, right? So I'm gonna take advantage of the internet, I'm gonna take advantage of all the social media, you know, it's still, but still have ECTV schedule for my seniors who watch these meetings, or whomever, will have a schedule and will have topics, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna play those topics on, on nights of, during the week, and during, you know, fill, you know, fill in during the week. But again, you'll be able to, if you wanna watch my whole address, you'll be able to go on your computer at home and pick any topic and listen to it. And I, you know what, no one's ever done it. I don't believe any mayor in the country is doing, there's probably some that don't, I don't think, you know, maybe that, I don't know if they're doing or not doing it. I'm just, just trying to think out of the box. And I just thought, you know, it's a lot of work for me to do, but I wanna do it, because I want, I wanna let you all know what, you know, all my directors are doing, you know, if it's Jim Soper, or if it's Greg St. Louis, who's working on so many unbelievable things when it comes to water and sewer, and, and, and Beecham Street, for instance, that's gonna be part of the address. What do we, what's going on with Beecham Street, right? We have many residents, you know, as you know, we got Mashrix money to do Beecham Street over, right? As you know, we got Mashrix money to do Elm and Ferry, and I know that's a conversation we guys are gonna have soon, and that's gonna go to bid soon, right? But so, a lot of those things will be in that speech. And, and that's why, and it's... But we will still be here, do a presentation, a full presentation, I will speak for like eight minutes, we have a very short part, but Eric Demas will then go through the finances of the city, part of the charter, part of what the charter really wants is the finances of the city, because most people, in the day, really care about is the finances. And CFO will do that, and so the charter calls, spells it out, as you know, you worked on the charter, it spells out to have that meeting every year in front of the school committee, superintendent, city council.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to have some advanced information on finance before we come into the budget here.
For the budget, exactly. And that's why the charter...
Information's more comprehensive.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm a little better with a multimedia approach. The concerns I've been hearing from are from seniors who are not on social media, who don't wanna be able to do it Facebook. They wanna be able to turn on ECTV after the soap operas or whatever and be able to watch what's going, you know, what's going on.
Right.
And they, they were the main people I was concerned about in this.
And I've talked to a few of them down at the College Center, as you know, as you go, as a lot of you, they asked me about it, and I, and they loved it, actually, and some of them are, so we're doing some programming down there, teaching them how to, well anyways, I don't wanna keep getting into it, I'll have you guys to midnight, I'll keep talking.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's all I have.
Councilor Handlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, you've talked about technology and what's in the charter, you talked about state and other places that are doing this, and many other excuses, State of the City, you also talked about that as growing older. We have, you know, State of the Country, we have State of the State, and we have State of the City. And the one thing you didn't put in here was tradition. It's tradition to have the thing here, to have the talk here in front of the council. I think this is a big thing that people look at, the mayor's gonna give the State of the City to the council, and that's tomorrow night, or whatever night it's gonna be. We usually have a full house for that, you know? And a lot of people look for that, and I think, I'm disappointed. I may or may not watch it on television, on, on, on my, my computer, you know, I have enough time as it is writing my own things. And I really think you should think this over, and you don't have to give what you wanna give the whole thing, but give a clipped version of what it should be, and be here, and do it for the people of Everett.
So we're still gonna do that.
Do it for the council.
We're gonna do a small version.
That's okay.
It's gonna be mostly on finances. So I will still do like a, you know, a, so we're not gonna call it, we're still, per the charter, per the charter, they want, they want prior to the, you know, budget submission, a conversation regarding the finances. So we will still do that. I still, we'll do a State of the City, you know, once elected, you know, or re-elected, or, you know, whomever.
Doesn't have to be long.
In a midterm address, in a midterm address, every two years between a four-year term, but it's those other two years, you know, we'll still, like I said, we'll, I understand, I get it, I get it.
It doesn't have to be, you know, three hours, two hours.
I, I understand.
Okay. No, half hour would be fine, you know?
Right.
So that's what, I would like to see that, I don't know, but you're gonna...
And, and, you know, the other thing too, was, it was just saving some money, you know? Even to do a State of the City, you still spend a few thousand dollars, crazy as it So, but I get it, and I do love tradition, as you know.
Thank you.
We'll still do something.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, President. My only suggestion would be maybe advertise that we have some copies on hand in ECTV, whether it's disc, or whatever that means may be, just so some seniors could come up to City Hall and, and grab a CD copy, or grab whatever, and watch at their leisure, not just at a schedule on ECTV, just a suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more, there's no, no more questions? Counselor Napolitano?
Second motion, a motion to refer back to sponsor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Motion, Speaker, Speaker Bill, to take item 19.
Second, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it, please read 19.
You know, I'll come here every two weeks, but these meetings will last until midnight if you come here every two weeks, just wanna let you know that.
Mr. President, item number 19 is a, be it ordered by the City Council of Everett, and as follows, in order to request approval from the state legislator to amend section 31 of the City Charter, mayor. And this was postponed from the April 8th meeting.
Counselor Mackaysey?
I believe the mayor wanted to speak on this, that's why we suspended it.
Right, I mean, the, the only, the reason why I wanted to speak on it, two-year terms for, for, for mayors would be very, very difficult for anyone to get, to get going. As you can imagine, you know, I'm, I'm 46 years old, I don't wanna do this...
You're 20 times, I hate it.
What, did I say that, really? You know, I, I, I'm just saying for the future, I understand that, I know some people would like me out of office, I don't know if that's the reason, but, and I know I feel that a lot of people want me to stay, and I wanna stay. Two-year terms for mayor, I think, would be, would be detrimental to the office itself. You know, you, your first year, you're operating under a budget that was passed by the mayor that you just unseated, or he or she resigned, or retired, or left, or didn't run for reelection. So then you have, by the time you realize that, you have now, you have to get, you have, you're in the next year, and your papers are coming out in March, and you have to fundraise, and you have to put a budget together, and priorities that residents put you in far won't really get accomplished. So I, you know, I just, it's not, won't be productive for the City of Everett going forward. I, I think a four-year term is, is, for an executive, is, is more beneficial in the long run for the, for the community. And you don't have to get into the specifics of how you have to spoke to do it, and get X amount of voters assigned, and I know Councilman Palatino knows this better than anybody here, and he can tell you. And that's all I wanted to say. You know, I know, Mike, you and I have had some differences, I mean, for a hundred years prior, we were closest as friends. And, you know, things happen, it's unfortunate, it's not even because of you and I, it's other people. But four-year term for mayor, I think, is just for the, for the city itself, for that person taking office, it'd be more beneficial for them to get, you know, things they campaigned on, to get promises made to get accomplished. That's all I wanted to say.
The purpose of this was, was two things. What's the word I'm looking for? It looks like that if you have a bad year, you don't really care as much because there's nothing that can really happen, there's no one holding a fire or a gun to your head to be more productive, and to be more assertive, and to maybe make five million in cuts, because you say, what difference it make, I'm here. And that's, that's, that's the, the reason that I brought it up, you know, complacent, what's the word, being complacent?
Complacency or something?
And that's the, the issue, that when does that strike, and you say, ah, what the hell, I'm not gonna go into work today, I don't feel like doing that today, now the taxes are up, eh, they can't do anything to me. When, when that...
But I, I don't, you know...
No, but when it happens, when, I mean, how, how do, how do you keep the fire on the someone's butt without making them complacent? That's what this is all about, to say, go for us here.
Right. The good thing is, with social media, my Facebook page, people keep me active all day long, right?
Oh, we beat the hell, oh, we beat the hell out of you.
Beat the hell out of me, yeah, I know you do.
But we keep you going.
Yeah, um, yeah, it keeps him going. Um, you know, with, with, you know, I, I think maybe prior, you know, years ago, um, I live and breathe this job. If I'm in this building or in this seat, or I'm, wherever I am, wherever I can be, um, my phone's always on, I receive emails, I respond to emails, I respond to residents' calls, messages, all the time. I, I, I would say prior to social media and all, you know, the, the phones and emails and texts, uh, you had to be in the building from nine to five, Monday through Friday, right? Uh, um, to get anything accomplished, right? You had to be what your department heads be. Today, you can have a Skype call with twenty department heads, and we're, we're downloading software now where we can hold a, 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 a department head meeting, rather than having my chief come in from the police department or fire chief, we can just get on a computer and have a meeting with all of us, you know? Um, we're downloading, we, we, we just got that software, and we're working on it now. Trust me, Mike, I am not complacent, I know, you know...
But I was wanting to...
You're not, you're not just saying me, you're saying in general.
I was, you know...
Well, you have a recall, I mean, people can get signatures, if, if there's a person in office, that they're not doing their job and not being accountable, uh, they're up, voters have an ability to, to, you know, to work on that.
But I also think the term limits, as far as myself, the city council, I don't think, you know, we're, we're embedded here, and I've been here a long term, and, you know, like, we run, we run, but if I had a term limits, I wouldn't have a problem, term was time to go. You know, I, you know, that's just how I feel, and Anthony brought that, that piece up, which I supported, it didn't pass anyhow as much well as the piece before us didn't pass. But, you know, just to get some feelings and how you feel about it, I mean, I just...
Well, I, I think, you know, term limits in local politics, with social media today, you don't have to raise a ton of money, you know? Years ago, when you had to do mailers and all that other stuff, yeah, but today, it's not like that anymore. Um, you don't have, you, you know, anyone could run for mayor, anyone can run for city council, um, you know, I, I think locally, term limits are called elections. Put your name on the ballot and you campaign, and you talk about the issues you're gonna talk about, what things you're gonna, and you judge them on their past performance, or their performance. Um, you know, you want to talk about higher offices, like senators and congressmen, you know, maybe a little different, uh, maybe they should have some term limits, but locally, if you got someone who's, I mean, I look at this, at this branch here, you're all very active, you're all in your neighborhoods, you're always working, you're being responsive, I mean, I, I follow you all on social media, right? Somehow or another, you're always, you're always available for your residents. Um, I feel this, you know, I, 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 I guess I, um, I disagree with you on this one, you know, um...
And that, that's all I'm looking for, I don't want to beat it to death, but, you know, ju- just to get a feeling out there, I mean, I, we're awfully two different positions, and obviously, the majority of people don't believe me.
But just remember, every time someone has something bad to say about me, it's usually because, A, they didn't get a promotion, B, they got fired, or C, they didn't get what they wanted. Um, because the word no is, I guess, uh, a, a, a reason to go sound off on people, and it's unfortunate these times, you know? Uh, you say no to someone and they, they hit you with something else, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm going to, um, I'm going to stop now, if anybody has something else to ask the mayor, uh, if there's any other pieces while we have them up here, let's ask them now, so, oh, okay, yeah, then I'm fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Consul McHazy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I also would echo the comments of Consul McHazy, that Consul DePero brought up a good piece two, a couple of weeks ago, which was the term limits for, uh, the council, and I supported both items. What I'm concerned by, Mr. Mayor, is you have a four-year term.
Yes.
City council has a two-year term, and you're off election year, not you, any mayor can stack the deck and bring in their, their bodies, and you could do it this year very easily, you could spend all of your time this year campaigning against certain members of the city council that you don't approve, or that you don't like, don't think you're gonna do it, but you could do it hypothetically.
Mike, if you read the lead of the Herald, they'll tell you, I'm in my backyard of my mansion, my pool all summer, so I wouldn't be stacking a deck, you know what I mean?
But I said it wasn't about you. But, but what I was going to say was, we have seen in past history in our city, decks being stacked, things not, things not being so key, so kosher. Unfortunately, that scares me right now, that we, that we could have...
Those are vindictive people, Mike.
That we could have that issue happening. We should try to do a term limit for each body that is equal, whether it's two years or four years. Would you agree with that statement?
I don't agree.
Whatever, whatever it is, either a four-year term or a two-year term, but not having these off, off terms.
I don't agree with term limits.
Do you agree equally having the term length?
The legis, a legislative officers holding the same term of executive?
No, the length, the length of off, so if the mayor's gonna be four years, city council four years, mayor's gonna be two years, city council two years.
If, I would, I would not, I, I, I think it'd be, it'd be, um, unfortunate for the mayor's position to go to a two-year term anytime. I know it would never happen in my lifetime, because by the time, let's, let's be honest, I mean, how many more terms do you think I'm gonna run for, you know? Um, I definitely wouldn't like to run for reelection this la, this, again, um, but by the time you do charter change and get a, it had to be on the time I ran, so it would have to be instituted for the next term, so it wouldn't affect me really per se, but it would be detrimental for the city to have a mayor on a two-year term. I don't think it, it, I do not think that's good, a, a good, uh, good thing to happen for, for any mayor, me or anyone in the fut- future. Um, for the, for the legislators, um, on a two-year term, um, you know, the good thing is, I mean, if you, if they wanted to do a change, to make it legislative four-year term, I think that's, that's fine, that'd be fine, and they get, you know, that, uh, you know, they did a term limited for you, they do like two or three terms of four years, so they'd maximum be twelve ti- twelve years, that'd be something that would be, I guess, be nice, you know?
I think that's what Consul DePero was going with.
But I think if you stagger that, you don't want to get everyone elected at the same time, and everyone gets twelve years in, and all of a sudden, you got a whole new group of city councilors, uh, jeez, I'd love to be the mayor that term, when he gets twelve mem, all very new members of the city council, but, um, I, I don't think it's broken, I really don't, you know, uh, I really don't, I think, uh, all of you here, when you run for reelection this year, are gonna get reelected. Yeah, um...
I respect your opinion on it, I just wanted to see what your opinion was, because you're going to be a resident longer than you're a mayor of our city, and it's going to affect you, because whether you're a resident or a mayor, you're gonna live in our community, and I know that. So, it does affect you long-term, whether you're in office or not, you'll still be a resident of our community, so it does affect your life, and that's why I wanted to just hear your opinion on the stagger terms of four-year mayor, a two-year city council, how you felt about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Consul DePero?
I don't have questions for the mayor, so if any of my colleagues do, I'll yield until he's excused. If not...
Why don't we, uh, well, we just, if there's, no more questions, why don't we excuse the, the mayor?
Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Is, is there any other pieces on...
I don't, I don't think so. Mr. Chairman, um, I've been talking with the sponsor over the last few weeks about this, and like you said, I did propose something similar for the council, I just think if we're gonna do for one, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, we should do it for all, including the school committee, but with, with that aside, um, I just don't think two-year terms are effective for an executive, you're sometimes afraid to make bold decisions, not afraid, but, you know, things take a while to, to work sometimes, and sometimes you need to fail a couple times before something really works, and elections do have consequences, you know, if you vote for someone, you're stuck with them for four years, there are provisions such as the recall, uh, that work around that. Uh, but with that said, in the spirit of teamwork, uh, I'm gonna make an amendment, if it's okay with the sponsor, and my amendment would be three, four-year terms, instead of two years.
So, county's saying three, four-year term for the...
It's up to you, you're the sponsor.
Motion, and accept your motion.
Hold on. You, withdrawing your motion?
I withdraw my motion, we refer back to sponsor if I could, and I would, uh, yield to, uh, Mr. DePero, or Consul DePero's, put in a form of motion.
Yes. And if it does pass, I was gonna resubmit the council and school committee piece in two weeks, if it passes.
All right, so what's...
Consul.
Everybody's talking, what's, why don't you just put the piece?
So, I just want to understand what we're doing.
Consul McHazy withdrew his...
Yeah, do we have a, a piece actively before us now?
Consul DePero made a motion.
Made a motion, made a motion through.
To a three, four-year term for council and mayor, correct?
No.
No, this piece is specifically for the office of mayor, and I would reintroduce the council piece, I just want to see what the will of the body is here. If there's no support for it, I would draw it.
So, so you're looking to put a three, a three-term cap, four years per term for mayor? Okay. And I, well, that's this particular piece, I think anything we do here, according to the charter, I think we need a commission. I think you need a charter commission if you're gonna change term of limits and all that stuff.
You're changing the charter.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty big deal, and it, you know, personally, I agree with the mayor. I think, uh, I think a two-year term is, it's impossible to do that job. Yeah, by the time you get into it, you're running for reelection, you're not doing the job anymore, you're running to get reelected, so, well, I mean, you've got, you've got three terms, uh, four years each, you get twelve years. Again, I don't, I don't agree with term limits, because I think if you have people who are doing the job, and they care, and they want to do the job, they should be allowed to do the job, and it's up to the electorate, the people will either vote them in or vote them out, and if they vote them out, then you weren't doing the job. Uh, but at the local level, I think it's much more important, uh, to have as much involvement as possible. As you get to the state and, and the federal level, I think that you do get into a situation where money takes over at the campaign, the incumbent has a huge advantage. I think that that's the way it happens, I agree with what the mayor said about that.
I'll make a motion and refer back to sponsor.
I'd second that.
Seconded. On the motion, I have two speakers that still want to speak. Consul Napolitano?
No.
No, it's, he's going back to sponsor.
Refer back to sponsor.
So, Consul Hanlon, you, did you still want to speak or no? Just going back to sponsor.
Refer back to sponsor.
So, motion was made and seconded?
Yep.
Send it back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President, can we take items eleven through fifteen collectively?
Do the public hearing, we start at one?
Yeah, yeah, take item one, oh, take item one to the table.
Take item one to the table. Can you read out number one, please, on the agenda?
Okay, item one was be it ordered by the city council, the city of Everett, Massachusetts as follows, to all parties interested in the public hearing, to allow national grid permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Gladstone Street, national grid to install one, I think, southern pole, sup, beginning at a point approximately forty feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of School Street, new south pole, number twenty-one thirty-three, and anchors on Gladstone Street.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Sing, thank you, Mr. Counsel, singlely owned pole.
Consul McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, make a motion that we open up public participation?
Now, public hearing.
Public hearing, excuse me. Thank you, Consul DePero.
Second. I don't think there's anybody here from National Grid. Correct. All in favor of this piece?
Mr. President.
Open it up. We would open up public participation on number one. Anybody in favor of number one? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That part is closed, anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed on National Grid?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Mr. President.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President.
On the piece, Mr. President.
Consul, and Consul McGlaughlin, and then Consul Matuski.
Mr. President, um, I, I think Consul Matuski was gonna hit on the same, I did see the gentleman here this evening, that was, um, from National Grid, he, he is obviously left sense. Um, I'd like to just get a couple of generalized questions, I'm sure I can do that, um, just by calling Dan Cameron or someone, but hours of operation, Gladstone Street's right outside of the Woodyard School, it's a very congested area at certain times throughout the day, um, and I think that just getting some clarification, so I don't know if there's a rush on these polls that need to get done for a certain reason, um, if we should hold them over, but I, I'm sure I could get my answers, but because of the location and the sensitivity of the school being right there, I don't know that, um, we should get that information before a vote of favorable on this this evening.
Consul, would if he is from the chair, would you postpone it for next meeting, and send invite to National Grid? On number one?
Which is okay.
We'll read number two, but the same thing on number two. Before I do that, Consul Matuski, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, uh, as you'll notice, I have a piece on the agenda tonight regarding School Street.
That's on number two, Consul?
I know, I'm, this is where the work's being done, Mr. President, on School Street.
We're on, we're on number one right now. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. My apologies.
Mr. President, there's a couple of things that trouble me here, uh, and I'll get into that, I'm gonna speak on a point of personal privilege, privilege tonight on a few things. We have to be very careful when we issue these permits. It seems to me that it's like the Bermuda Triangle in this city, you go down one street, it's blocked, they're doing work. I have no, no problem, I know that, you know, progress has to take place, but, you know, we've got to be careful of the traffic flow, you just can't, you know, I want to know if there's other things going on. School Street is, uh, become a problem because of speeders, and that's why I requested the speed bump and the, and the monitor device to actually slow people down. But, uh, we're gonna postpone these and, uh, we can get some more information, but I, the thing is, Mr. President, that, uh, we have to be a little more knowledgeable and, uh, we're, you know, anywhere in this city, welcome to Everett, and there you are at a roadblock, except for the other, I'd say in the, toward the Marlin End, there isn't too bad, but everything around the parkway is loaded, any street you take, there's work going on, and, you know, we have to coordinate it, it just seems like there's no coordination. But anyway, uh, I'll, uh, second the motion to postpone this to the next meeting, thank you.
That's on, you have to do it, you have to do it, we have to read two of it, one is to postpone, postpone the next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Can you read number two, please, on the agenda?
Item number two, Mr. President, be it ordered by the city council, the city of Everett, Massachusetts as follows, to all parties interested in the public hearing, to allow national grid permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining protecting fixtures along and across the following public way or ways herein after name. Gladstone Street and Broadway, national grid to install, beginning at point approximately a hundred and fifteen feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of School Street, and continuing approximately two hundred and fifty feet in an easterly direction. National grid to install plus, you know this, plus or minus two hundred and fifty feet of two-to-five inch conduits encased in concrete from existing pole number twenty-one thirty-two, Gladstone Street, to existing, um, not sure what MH is, I apologize, two thirty-six Broadway. Manhole, thank you.
Thank you, Consul Hanlon. Um, public participation, all in favor of this piece?
To public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right, I'm sorry about that. All my public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor of, um, national grid? All in favor? All in favor, national grid? That part is closed, all opposed? All opposed? All opposed to, two on the agenda?
Make a motion to close public hearing, and we refer this to the next meeting.
Seconded. Yeah.
Refer to next meeting.
Refer to next meeting, we're to invite the national grid for one and two.
Yes.
Representative?
We invite Dan Cameron, uh, was he being on this piece?
Well, just a representative.
A representative for National Grid. When you're ready, you can read number...
Can we make, make a motion, we take item number four and five collectively?
Second.
Can you take four and five collectively, please read four first?
Item number four, Mr. President, that the Everett City Council, oh, excuse me, offered by Consul Richard Della Sola as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Linda Angelillo to the Election Commission for a term of four years expiring April first, twenty twenty-three.
Consul McGlaughlin?
We did item four and five collectively.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Can you read number five, please?
Item number five is offered by Consul Richard Della Sola, Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Dorothy Martin Long to the Election Commission for a three-year term expiring April first, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President, on the motion.
Consul?
Mr. President, I think, uh, City Clerk Canelo told us, uh, in the last week that there was some, um, re, resignation on the Elections Commission, and this evening, to see these two individuals, uh, which we probably both, all of us know very well, but Dorothy Martin Long, um, is somebody that I feel comfortable that she's being reappointed to be the, I think, the only existing member that has previously been there that is going to stay on the board, with her fast knowledge of elections in our community and being a part of them, um, I feel really confident that we're gonna have a strong Elections really confident that we're going to have a strong Elections Commission leading into this next upcoming election cycle with Dorothy's support and advice, so I'd make favorable action on items four and five.
Counsel Capone?
Mr. President, to the extent that we have to suspend Rule 20, I believe we suspend Rule 20.
Seconded to spend Rule 20? All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it? Do a roll call vote?
On item number four, Mr. President, Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Counsel Matouski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin. Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
And Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed number four. On item number five, favorable action, Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Counsel Matouski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed number five also, sir.
Spend the rules, take item number 20, please.
Motion to take, read item 20? We have a second on that? Second, thank you.
Item number 20, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Michael Marquez that in addition to the nuisance panhandling law be added as follows, it should be unlawful for any person to beg or solicit money or aid on his own behalf in any place of business house or upon any street, any of the streets of Everett. And this was, at the last meeting, this was enrolled as amended. Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
We had the legal department, could we have Mr. Slattery, Mr. Slattery come up here before us? Let us know if there's any change in anything?
Counsel, just before, he does just so, just on the notes here, it's from the clerk, it just said it was amended to delete background check and replace it with CGIS.
Yes, that's what we approved, yes. Before we vote this, has anything changed on that?
Nope, we just, you know, we had that conversation about general panhandling.
Yep.
Ordinances being unconstitutional. This is an aggressive panhandling ordinance, and the chief seemed to discuss the fact that these are secondary crimes.
Yep.
And if it rises to that level, he'd be willing to add the terminology to do a warrant check.
I just want to make sure we didn't have anything changed from last week, so we hopefully vote for approval and give a little bit of, a little bit of safety around here.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slattery. Anybody have any questions?
Any more questions, Counselors?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, this is for ordainment on item number 20. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio? Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel Matouski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin? Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
A little, little, little return.
Okay, we'll go back to, please read number six, please, on the agenda.
Item number six, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Richard Delasola Jr. as President in order to accept a donation of $2,595 from the Society for Fire Protection to the City of Everett's Fire Department for new camera equipment.
Seconded, can you roll call vote? All in favor? All in favor? All opposed yet?
It's an order, it's an order.
Yeah, that was right.
Favorable action, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio? Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel Matouski? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. What are the thanks?
Can you read number seven, please, on the agenda?
Item number seven, Mr. President, is a petition from Counsel Richard Delasola as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new Class II motor vehicle dealer's license for best cars auto sales at Three Everett Ave, and this was recommended to go right into community business development, where is it, a new?
Second motion.
Seconded. Hall is in favor. Roll call vote, please?
No, no.
Voice, voice. All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it? Read number eight, please.
Item number eight, Mr. President, is a petition also offered by Counsel Richard Delasola as President that the City of Everett hereby approves the junk dealer collector license renewal for Schnitzin Northeast at 69 Rover Street.
Mr. Clerk, all paperwork is in order?
Yes, it is.
Make a motion for favorable action?
Yes, says renewal. Yes. Roll call vote? Favorable action. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez? Counsel Matouski? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Can you read number nine on the agenda, please, when you're ready?
Item number nine, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin that is honored the mayor and the CFO appear at the next meeting to give an update on any recommendations that have been made from the School Review Commission and to see if an audit has been done on the school department, and if a Blue Ribbon Commission has been formed to address the school funding forward, and you should have, I believe I put earlier on everybody's desk, the information that was given out.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. In that committee, we heard from CFO that told us that the Blue Ribbon Commission was finalizing their draft and was hoping to have it out sometime, I believe, in May, and I think we made the recommendation that we would refer this to, or the first or second meeting in May, I can't remember, I apologize, for them to issue the report to us when it was deemed.
I think it was May 2nd.
Was it the second meeting in May? Actually, if I can yield the floor to my colleague DePiero, maybe, yes, the chairman can help refresh my memory.
Richie, I got the meetings here.
Mr. Chairman, if you need me to clarify, Ken.
Counsel DePiero?
I believe we discussed the motion to refer the piece to our first meeting in May to give the clerk enough time to get us these minutes, where we have them tonight. I don't know if we still have to, but if the counselor would like to refer it to that meeting so we can get the Blue Ribbon Report, that would be fine, I think.
Mr. President, thank you to Chairman DePiero. I will do that, I will make a motion that we refer item number nine to the second meeting in May with the hope that we, first meeting in May, I'm sorry, with the hope that we will have the report from the Blue Ribbon Commission on the school finance recommendations.
Counsel Matouski?
Just a comment on the Blue Ribbon Commission. Most of these are six months old, these committee meetings, I expected more from the Blue Ribbon Commission. I'd like to know how the superintendent of schools was able to take $500,000 out. I know that, you know, he had it being reimbursed for sick time. No, they didn't even bring it up, so it's really, and when the school department makes a budget, Mr. President, I'm sticking to it, I'm not going to do the five, six, or seven million dollar thing that we did last year. Put the budget right, we have a school committee, they approve it, for some of them have amnesia, they didn't vote for the superintendent's contract, most of them have been up there for twenty years, ten to twenty years. How do you not know what you're voting on? Make a long story short, it's a whole new ballgame in the school department, and I hope to see some changes that can respect the taxpayers of this community, and I hope that the Blue Ribbon Commission actually, now that the former superintendent is gone, the Blue Ribbon Commission maybe can get some gumption and start to ask the questions that they're supposed to be asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, just to help out now, Counsel Matouski, just to let him know that there's two separate committees, Counsel Matouski, the one that we got the minutes tonight for is the School Review Commission, which was made up of the poppinheads, a few members of the City Council. The Blue Ribbon Commission is a business committee that the mayor put together with Mr. Salom from Century 21 Bank and a host of other business people. It's two separate committees that are meeting separately to do research and find facts on the school department. So what we're reviewing tonight is from the review, the school committee, School Review Commission, excuse me. So just so you know, the Blue Ribbon Commission is a separate committee from those notes that we're looking to get their report, which is a committee made up of businessmen that the mayor put together to help us with this process.
If I might, Mr. President, on that.
Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you for that information, Councilman, but the business community, when is that report coming up? Early May, and this? Okay. But, you know, I just read some of this, and I know all these people are trying to do the right thing, but we've really got to get the budget under control. You saw what happened last year, we had this room, this chamber filled with people, a hundred people being laid off, and then you had an employee taking five, half a million dollars out of the, I mean, come on. Am I the only one, you know, I know everybody's concerned here, but this has got to stop. It really has to stop. And I, for one, am going to be watching that school committee budget, what they put in, they're scaring some of the employees, you're going to be laid off and you're going to come up here and be emboozled us. I'm not into it. Okay, I've had enough of that. It's time to grow up and do the right thing, and I think the school department, school committee, I've been approached by many people, they're all interested, I have some financial people telling me they're going to run a few of my neighbors. It's going to be, it's the first time in about, oh, let's see, about fifteen, twenty years that there's going to be some people running for school committee for the first time. I think that's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McGlaughlin?
Go ahead. Please, just indulge me, I just wanted to read the exact, Counsel DePiero kind of explained it out, but just the minutes that were from the committee meeting from last week, but it just said the committee voted to report back to the City Council with the recommendation to refer to the city clerk to request that he provide the City Council members with copies of the School Finance Review Commission meeting minutes by the first regular City Council meeting in May. That's the exact wording from the clerk for the committee.
So moved, and make a motion to refer this to the first meeting in May with the hope that we'll get the Blue Ribbon Commission to stock this.
Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it, for the first meeting in May? Look and read number 10 on the agenda.
Item number 10, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Richard Delasola as President that the representative from the mayor's office, Mr. Tony Sooner from Planning and Development, and representative from the engineering office appear at the next council meeting to give an update on the progress of the Ferry Street construction progress, and I do have, it was discussed at length in the committee, public safety, public service, and the committee, after lengthy discussion, voted to report to the City Council a recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes, we were entertained to a presentation about the details of what's going on on Ferry Street, I want to thank the council president for setting that up. It's going to be a big project, but I had no idea, we've sat through many, many of these type of presentations over the years, you know, I've been doing this for sixteen years, you know, and it's just, the detail that they're telling us, they're showing us that they're going to be, what they're going to be involved with Ferry Street, are they going to, doing a heavy duty, you know, reconstruction, including, you know, the water mains, the city will be paying for the water main, everything else is all being paid by the state and grants. It's going to be disruptive, but it's also a long-term plan, so we've seen Ferry Street resurfaced many times over the years, we know what kind of shape it's in right now, this is an extensive job that's going to involve taking up the railways, the trolley tracks that are under there, the cobblestones are under there, they got to take all that up to be able to get at Maine. So this is going to be a huge, huge project, starting somewhere around the end of next year, going into 2021. But it's important, I think, that the members to get, you know, look at the reports, see the information that was given to us, because this is a huge investment in streets that some of us have had repaired several times over the last, you know, fifteen, sixteen years. So I applaud the president for scheduling that. If we can get them back in here to do a full presentation for the council, I think it would be warranted, because as, when this project hits the ground and starts disrupting the traffic flows, it's going to involve Ferry Street from, you know, the intersection of Chelsea Street to Ferry Street all the way to Glendale Square, it's going to affect Elm Street. The intersection of Chelsea Street and Ferry Street's going to have a rotary. Try to picture that, you know? So this is going to be a huge project, but it's going to be a huge investment in the city, and it's well overdue, so.
Counsel, that was going all the way to the Malden Line, I think.
Malden Line?
Correct. And Elm Street, to the Revere Line.
I live on this side of Glendale Square, I didn't care about anything, no, I'm just kidding, I do care.
I'll keep you updated.
That's right, I forgot, we're elected citywide. I do care about all of Ferry Street. No, but seriously, I think it was very, very informative, more information than I ever expected to hear, and I got to say, the first time I sat to an entire presentation and wasn't bored.
Thank you.
So if, again, right now, you know, the motion was to refer back to sponsor.
I got one more speaker on that motion, Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I was actually going to ask that we refer this to the second meeting in May, and that for the reason is because Greg St. Louis told us that he would get us an answer on, with National Grid being able to maintain the condition of Ferry Street as it sits today, so that the business owners and residents can have some satisfaction for the summer season. Some of the major potholes and so forth that are, they are currently today are under the watch of National Grid. So I'd like to see if we could refer this to the second meeting in May and invite up Greg St. Louis again to give us an update on that work that should be done.
Do we should make a separate piece on this, Counselor?
Okay, it's fine.
Just to go back to sponsor and then we'll make it a National Grid topic itself. Like, you're correct, there's trenches, you're talking a year from now, probably a year and a half from now, 2020, they're starting from Lower Ferry, and it's going to be sections at a time, so it could be 2021 before they get to Glendale Square.
And that's why I thought if we piggyback this, but I'm okay with referring it back to sponsor.
All in favor to send it back to sponsor? All opposed, the ayes have it?
Mr. President, can we make a motion to take items number 11 through 15 collectively? Waive the?
All in favor to read 11 to 15? Ayes have it? Can you read number 11, please? I don't know if we can do that, Counsel, do you have to read each item? You have to read. No, we have to read each item. Okay, Counselor?
Excuse me, Mr. President, at the last meeting, we waived the reading on several items and referred, especially if you're referring back to sponsor.
I wasn't here last meeting, but I'm almost 100% sure you have to read every item.
So it should be the will of the body if they want to do that, but I'm in favor of waiving the reading on all five items, if they're all going to be referred back to sponsor.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Counselor Napolitano on that?
I mean, this goes right back to the first meeting of the first unicameral City Council. Our rules do not allow us to waive the reading of any rules. If it slipped through, I didn't, I don't recall the catching it, but we cannot waive the reading. The items had to be read, and then one motion, in a case like this, referring them all back to sponsor, the proper motion would be that one vote, well, it's actually all in favor, so it's not even an individual item. Okay. No, it's our rules, our rules prohibit us from.
We have to read each item.
Got to read through each item.
It's all, it's all going to be read individually, but it'll be one vote, one vote taken to combine them all, but they just have to be read for the public thing, at least because the public knows what's being. Okay, item number 11 is Counsel McGlaughlin, Dr. Eazy from the Office of Organizational Assessment appear at the next council meeting with any assessment reports that have been conducted at the Health and Wellness Center for the past two years, and all employees and functions of the department, as well as any recommendations that have been made also. Item, excuse me, number 12 is also by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin, that Laura Webby, the Director of the Human Resources, appear at the next council meeting to explain the management structure of the Health and Wellness Center and to provide any changes in management in that department in the last year. Item number 13 is also by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin, that is honored the mayor appear at the next council meeting to discuss conducting and engrafting.
at the next council meeting to discuss conducting an independent operational audit of the Health and Wellness Center. And then also, item number 14 is by Counsel McGlaughlin, that the Operational Assessment Director appear at the next council meeting and provide a list of all employees that need specialized licenses or qualifications to work in their present positions at the Health and Wellness Center, and to make sure that all employees currently work and they are certified to do so. And item number 15 is also by Counsel McGlaughlin, that his Honored the Mayor and the Human Resources Director appear at the next meeting to discuss the next steps that will be taken for the replacement of the directorment of the Wellness Center, and they were, is in committee, and it was committee recommended to refer these back to sponsor.
Mr. President, can we accept the committee report, place on file, take one vote, and the affirmative to refer it back to sponsor?
Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number 16 on the agenda?
Item number 16, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael Marchese that the city explain in detail what constitutes a small business.
Accept the committee report and refer to the city assessor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number... 17 on the agenda.
Item number 17, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael Marchese that the city consider changing the personal property exemption from $50,000 to $100,000 to help businesses in the city, and this was, and committee recommended to refer to the, excuse me, recommended to refer to the mayor's chief of staff.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, place, accept the committee report placed on file. Refer to the mayor's chief of staff.
Second the motion?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, that the zoning ordinances of the city of Everett are hereby amended by adding a new section 19A, regulations governing applications for site plan review. For the Dover Amendment, use as follows.
I move to postpone for 30 days, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, just so everybody knows that this was recommended because it has to go out and be advertised for 30 days, so there's, that's why the good counsel is motion for the 30-day postponement.
That was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number 23, please?
Item number 23, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Peter Napolitano, actually when he was president, be ordained by the Everett City Council that Section 3-33, Keeping Hen's Poultry, or the revised ordinance of the city of Everett be amended as follows.
Counselor Polatano?
Mr. Chairman, this piece was put on back last year. I'll be honest with you, I'm not up to speed on it. I didn't even realize it was going to be on the agenda tonight, though, you know, without the, these type of items were changes made by the city clerk that were put through to the, through the council. For that reason, with the clerk not being here, I would ask that we hold this over, postpone it till the next meeting.
Seconded, all in favor?
Unless he chooses to share that information with us directly, that is. I will withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yes.
Can I motion? Could I motion to have the city clerk come before us?
Good evening, city clerk from the city of Everett. How are we doing, gentlemen? So this was sent as a referral from, I think Counsel Hanlon, I mean, from the board, but I remember Counsel Hanlon and a few other counselors motioning to send this to the zoning board, excuse me, to the planning board to see if we could zone it. I remember that. And after some discussion in planning, and then a discussion, yep, yeah, they wanted to zone it, and, right, am I wrong, structures and stuff like that? Yeah. They recommended that what we should do, because they didn't really see it going into zoning, was to do what other municipalities did. They've taken it, struck it from their ordinances, and given it, and put it onto the hands of the Board of Health. Who regulate it? Who normally handle these type of issues? They will regulate it in their board, because they are the authority. For some reason, years ago, we must have decided that we should have regulated it in an ordinance, and it really should be regulated by the Board of Health as it is in other municipalities. They understand food safety, they understand health codes, and so on. So after a discussion with Tony Souza and with the Health Department, that was their recommendation, that we, here, you can do it now, or you can postpone it to make that decision, because it still needs to be enrolled and ordained, is to strike it from our ordinances and let the Board of Health have their regulations back, and let them set the regulations that they feel is necessary, as they are the, really, the authority for it, and they have more knowledge than we do when it comes to that. Ms. Silver thought it would be great if we did that from the Board of Health, and they discussed it, so it's up to you. You can obviously keep it in-house and keep it as an ordinance, but that was their recommendation.
Yeah. We have a communication from Tony Souza.
Like to read it, please?
Yeah, I was, yep.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. It just says, Dear City Clerk Canelio, I have reviewed the city council's communication requesting that the planning board, through the planning department, prepare an ordinance relative to backyard poultry and other foul. As I understand, the Board of Health, through the Health Department, currently has rules and regulations regarding this matter. It would be most beneficial that changes to the rules and regulations come from the Board of Health as opposed to the planning board. If you do have any further questions, feel free to contact me, and this is from Tony Souza.
So if you refer to them, they wrote some regulations, and that's how this actually started. They wrote it, we sent it here, and then it went to planning. They kind of want to be able to just regulate it without having to ask our permission. Now, it's your authority to not allow that, but, again, they're the most knowledgeable people when it comes to health code. I just think it makes sense to strike it, like other municipalities have. They don't have it in their ordinances. The Board of Health regulates it themselves as a policy, and they decide how they should do it, what type of cages, and so on and so forth. So, again, it's just an opinion, but maybe if we make a motion to strike it from the ordinances, do that as an enrollment and ordainment, and then we can refer it to them to regulate it on their own. That way, it takes it out of our, you know, your hands, but it's up to you.
Counselor Napolitano?
Where I haven't looked at this in a while, and I don't agree with that, but I also want to proceed cautiously, I would just ask to postpone this till the next meeting. We'll get all the details of what we, the whys and the whys, what we need to do this properly, and then we'll take care of it. We'll make the proper motion at that time.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it for next meeting? Can you read number 24, New Business?
Item number 24, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by counselors DePiero and DeFlorio, respectfully questioning that Mr. Jay Monte of Planning and Development evaluate the intersection of Cory and School Streets and possibly add some more Do Not Enter signs at the neighborhood's request.
Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at the agenda, I know Counsel Matouski has gotten some of these same concerns from the school street area. I'll let him talk about the speeding. It's an obvious issue down there. Very prominent neighbor in the area spoke to several of us, and there have been some accidents behind the fire station and behind the library of cars. I'm not realizing that it's one way. I'm not exactly sure what the issue is. Maybe it's distracted driving, but I've driven into the Do Not Intersection and have caused some accidents. So me and Counsel DeFlorio are looking for some, maybe some more signage, whatever traffic thinks is appropriate, and maybe send us a communication back and let us know what their idea is, and I'll yield to Counsel DeFlorio.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe we should start looking at some signs that have, like, I've seen reflects, you know, they reflect. A lot of cities and towns have the signs with reflectors on it. Sometimes the streets are dark, or a tree covers the signs. I mean, this is really an ongoing issue with the entire city. There's some signs you just can't see.
Cambridge has a stop sign with lights around the stop sign.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. I know those might be a little on the expensive side, but maybe we should start considering that after the casino opens, and, you know, something in that idea. Thank you.
Any more speakers on this piece? Counsel DePiero?
Refer to traffic for a response? I'm sorry, refer to Jay Monte with the response.
Have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Can you read number 25 on the agenda, please?
Number 25, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne Matouski, that the city services install the speed bump again on School Street and Tufts Ave in the interest of public safety.
Counsel Matouski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer this to the city services department and the mayor. Now, this speed bump program was started, I think it was last year, around various schools. Nickel Street had, near the Kavarian School, and it was great. It slowed people down. I, for one, appreciated it. Wish I could have one near my house, but it's not a school zone. So needless to say, whoever did that program last year, I believe the mayor instructed the city services to do that. I want to see that continued, and it's, School Street, as we all know, the children and pedestrians and the vehicles go to the Kavarian School, and, I mean, the Whittier School, and it just becomes kind of a mess, and people don't slow down. There's a lot of children in that area. So let's refer this to the mayor's office and the city services department.
Counsel, do you want, like, a response back at the next meeting, a written response?
No, I actually had the opportunity to speak to the mayor tonight regarding this issue, and he's in full agreement that speeding has to stop in these locations, so, and this all has to do with St. Anthony's School, too, Tufts Ave, so it's all in the same area. But it's a great program, by the way. I don't know why it wasn't done 20, 30 years ago, but those temporary speed bumps work, you know, and they're fluorescent, you can see them at night, so needless to say, I don't need a response back, I just want to refer it to them, and the mayor said he'd see what he could do to get them up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. We had a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Mr. Chairman, before the next thing, I don't want to forget. I don't believe we entertained a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting, so I just want to do so now before we all forget to do so.
This is item number 26?
No.
Okay.
It's after public participation, Mr. President.
All in favor? Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Thank you.
Item 26, please?
Item number 26, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne Matouski, that the Everett Police Traffic Department placed a speed monitor device on School Street due to reported speeding.
Counsel Matouski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer this to Chief Maisy at the Everett Police Department and the mayor's office also. There was serious speeding coming off of the Rotary Main Street. They just whip right around that corner. The stop signs, I've never seen anything like it, really, and I'm in that area quite a bit, so refer this to the mayor's office and Chief Maisy, please. Thank you.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number 28, please?
Item number 28, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael Marchese, that a moratorium be put on construction on all new buildings from the Rotary going north on Main Street and Broadway, as well as Chelsea Street and Ferry Street for a length of between one and three years.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number 29, please?
Item number 29, Mr. President, is a ordinance offered by Counsel Richard Delasola as president, that the Everett City Council hereby modifies the city's flammable registration fees.
Counsel Hanlon?
Make a motion, refer that to our city clerk, have him review it, and have him give us suggestions on where the, where it should be.
Okay, city clerk, he has a, wants to speak on that?
Yep, very briefly. We already changed them, but when I, I've got some calls from counselors and some businesses, when we did it originally, I think we just made it a drop high for some of the smaller businesses. So I felt that, and, again, you don't have to agree with me, but I just dropped it by a penny. So instead of five cents, it went to four cents per gallon, and 10 cents to eight cents, and then for gases, it went from three cents to 10 cents, 30 cents to 10 cents. I just noticed that some of the smaller businesses were going to get a little more hit than I really wanted, and that was not my intent. It was accidental, I would say. I didn't realize how much they, how much product they had and how much it would hurt a small business. So by reducing this, our total revenue will drop by 20 grand, but we'll still be receiving over 300,000 inflamables, and will help some of the smaller businesses. So it's really just a little mistake on my part, and you, again, you can hold it over if you, if you want, but I just wanted to give you the clarification on what my reasoning was to bring it back so quick.
Chairman, I remove my motion and put a new one in, that we favor action according to the automatic corrections at the city clerk.
Second?
Seconded, all in favor? Have your own call vote.
Yep. Okay, for enrollment, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio? Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese? Counsel Matouski? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays. You have enrolled.
Can you read number 30 on the agenda, please?
Mr. President, item number 30 is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin, that the DCI consider adding more safety measures around the Route 16 and the rotaries to better protect pedestrians that are on foot and vehicles that are on the roadways.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, to echo the comments of my colleagues earlier, there are serious speeding issues happening around the rotaries. Pedestrians trying to get across the Rotary to get onto Lower Broadway from the Main Street section or the other side of Broadway. It's just a really dangerous situation, that the DCI needs to come and take a serious look at what measures can be put in place to slow down cars and to be able to make it more safe for pedestrians walking and for cars that are traveling around the rotaries. There's no separation of lane markers, there's no, it really is just, anybody does whatever they want down there, and it's just out of control. And I think that this echoes the pieces previously from my colleagues, that I think this area needs to be studied thoroughly to try to give some relief to this area. So I'd make a recommendation to refer this to the DCI and ask for a response back in 30 days.
Under motion, I got two speakers. Counsel Capone?
Say, Mr. President, I echo the sentiments, and also, we need to ask them to better maintain that area. It's always filthy.
It's a mess.
You know, it's continuously. The other thing is, while we have the piece here for the viewing audience, or if anybody here knows of anybody, DCI cannot even fill the job of a crossing guide on the circle. Nobody wants it. It's too dangerous. So Whittier School has been trying to get it filled. I know some of us have tried. DCI has a job advertised. I don't know how much it pays, but they cannot even get someone to take the job, because that's such a dangerous intersection. So we have to find a better way. So I support the colleague.
Counsel DeFlorio?
I was going to echo on the sentiment of the place being so dirty. When by the end of the day, I couldn't believe it. Empty trash bags everywhere, debris everywhere. I mean, you've got a casino, a billion-dollar casino going down the street, people coming to the city to see this mess. They've got to do a better job of cleaning up. That's number one. Number two, maybe signage would help. Slow down, school district, whatever, in that corner, just before you go around the Rotary. Put big signs up, school zone, give them more of a fine. They've got to be able to make the structure, we're in the school zone, you're going to get a double fine. They do it when you're doing work in the city, so why can't they do it when there's schools in the area? So I recommend that if we could please amend the piece to say all that, if my colleague would, you know, I know it's his piece, and I definitely don't want to cross, and refer it to Senator DiDomenico and refer it to Representative McGonigal. Refer it to the governor's office, I don't care, refer it to everybody.
Mr. President, under motion.
Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I was actually going to mention as well, there... And this may sound crazy to some, but I unfortunately seen a very serious accident happen in 2015. In the middle of a night in 2015, a young man was driving up Route ninety-nine coming from Boston. He thought he could drive straight across to get onto Main Street and unfortunately flipped his car below. And he was an individual, a nineteen-year-old young man from Stoneham, and I'll never forget that night. And he passed by me, thought the snow covered, he thought he could go straight across to get to Main Street, not knowing that there was a hole there. And he unfortunately flipped underneath and passed away that evening. And I'll never forget that night happening. So I'm wondering if there's a way to be able to... That's why I thought the signage, because there was another accident of some sort that happened there two weeks ago. Not clear what happened there. But if there's some way that they could put a grate or something or signage, let people know that in climate weather, you can't go straight across. Because when you're coming up ninety-nine, if you don't know Everett, you look like you can't go onto Main Street straight across from there. And that night, unfortunately, something terrible happened. So I would echo the comments of Council Capone and DeFlorio that cleanup needs to happen in that area. Signage, the DCR needs to take this issue serious and be able to work with the city to be able to enhance that whole area. As one of my colleagues said, there's a casino coming eight weeks from now. That area is going to be basically the front door of the casino for hundreds of thousands of cars. The DCR isn't going to take that seriously, they're not going to take anything serious in our community. So I'd ask that we recommend, refer the piece to Representative McGonigal, Senator DiDomenico, what the amendments that were suggested, and to refer, ask for a response back in thirty days with some recommendations of how they can help enhance this area for all pedestrians involved.
Second on that, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it?
Can we make a motion? Second the motion.
All in favor?
Excuse me, not number nine, excuse me, item number thirty.
Thirty. The motion was to put all the councilors on the piece and send a letter to Senator DiDomenico and State Rep. Joe McGonigal. And the governor's office. And DCR also. We had a second on that, all in favor? All opposed? The last piece on the agenda is number thirty-two.
Item number thirty-two, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero that the Everett City Council hereby approves the dedication of a memorial square in honor of U.S. Air Force Senior Master Sergeant James L. Salata.
Council DePiero.
Mr. President, Mr. Salata was a great man, a highly decorated individual, lifelong Everett resident, and this is certainly well-deserved. But with that, I'd like to amend it and add the entire city council, I'm sure no one would oppose that.
Second.
May have. May have, yeah. On the amendment, if we want to take a vote?
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
And is this a favorable action vote, or do we refer it to the Veterans Commissioner?
Yes.
So I'd like to refer it to Commissioner Cristiano.
Second motion.
Seconded, roll call vote? Are you referring it to?
Commissioner Cristiano, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
As amended, obviously.
As a motion. Before we adjourn, this Saturday is opening day for Little League. We're going to be down there following the parade. We're going to have a table and our tent set up for popcorn and cotton candy for the, for all the people who'll be down there. And on Sunday, we'll have girls softball at ten-thirty on Glendale Park. They're opening day, and we'll have popcorn and slush for them. So all volunteers, all the council are welcome. So after the parade Saturday, and then opening day for girls softball on Sunday. Little League's at Sacramone, girls softball's at Glendale. Council Matouski.
Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned tonight, now, this is the end of the meeting, before we adjourn, it's not a point of personal privilege, but May fourth, there's some kind of activity going on at the Encore. I have no knowledge of it. And I bring this up only because there's been a lack of communication. I don't know, I do talk to several other members.
Does email sent out the end of February?
An email? What's wrong with something in the meal? I mean, come on. And who was orchestrating this? You as president, Mr.?
We talked to John Tarko a while back, and it was postponed at one time, and May fourth is the date.
I want it in the meal, okay? Anything. As a matter of fact, I spoke to our clerk, legislative aide, this evening. I did not receive an agenda. Now, I'm only bringing this up because, you know, I'm learning how to do the computer and emails and so forth, but I want a paper form in my mailbox on Saturday. I didn't get it Saturday, I didn't get it Monday, which is today, right? So if you mail it Thursday at the mailbox in front of the post office, you're going to get it Saturday. So I'm asking you, Mr. President, to instruct our legislative aide, and by law, we're supposed to receive this, just so you all know. And another thing that I notice has been happening at every meeting is it says amended on April nineteenth, which is a Friday. This is a dead issue on noon time on Thursday. You can't amend the calendar. Now, maybe that's in the charter too, and it's not, okay? So we got to stop saying it's in the charter, it's this, it's that. We got to have it in the mailbox, okay? Either, I don't mind a Monday, but that's cutting it close. It doesn't take much, and I know our aide is busy up here, but these are important things to me. You know, and... You know, I'm just saying. And, you know, I want to be notified in a timely fashion, especially with anything to do with the casino. And I don't know how other members feel, but I feel that way.
So if we all get emails, you want a letter in the mailbox?
Well, I want email, what's it take to make a copy? Everybody should get a hard copy. I mean, come on. It's a three billion dollar project, you can't spend fifty cents on a stamp. It's just, it's like romper room, you know, the way this thing is going. But I want the calendar in my mailbox on a Saturday, like I've done for the last so many years.
Council Flor...
Thank you.
Council Florio.
You know what the problem is? The agenda is getting mailed out. Now, for example, today, I didn't go home, I came directly from work. Usually you get it on, you might get it on a Monday, you don't get it on a Saturday anymore. So this isn't any fault of anybody. It could be the post office. If you're mailing it out on a Thursday at one o'clock, we're not getting it by Saturday. So the best thing to do is, is the agenda ready by one o'clock on Thursday?
Ninety percent of the time it is.
Okay, so either we come over here and pick it up, or we deliver it to someone's home. It has to be hand delivered.
If it's going out Thursday, he's doing his part. If it goes out Thursday at twelve o'clock, we've done our part.
I understand we've done our part, but the point, the point we're trying to bring is, it went out Thursday. I'm not saying anything bad, I'm not saying it didn't go out. The point is, I don't need a written copy, okay? I have email, I print my copy. But the councilor is saying he wants a hard copy. He's not getting it. So it's the post office's fault, whoever's fault it is, it doesn't matter, we're not pointing fingers. So if the two councilors, they want the hard copies, have someone deliver it to their house.
And if I may, Mr. President, I absolutely have no problem doing that. Council Matouski, I apologize if you're not getting it. All I can say is, is that if you look at the label every single week, it's postmarked on that Thursday. And like this week, it got out a little bit, a little bit later, but not too much later. It was still by two o'clock. I put it in the mail. Originally, I will say, when I first started here, I was told to put it in the mailroom over there. I stopped doing that because there were some delays. So what I've been doing lately, and what I was told, is to bring it out to the mailbox out front because every day by four o'clock, if you look right on that mailbox at the corner out the front here, that they have, the last pickup is four P.M. So as long as it's in that mailbox, technically by four P.M., they have it Thursday afternoon. Now, I don't know why, but to make sure that you get it, I absolutely, whether it's you or Council Simonelli or anybody else, I have no problem hand delivering it just to make sure that you get it. Because I do want to make sure that you get it, because sometimes, like I said, who needs to get a calendar?
Let me just clarify, I do have a new mailman. We had a nice mailman, Mr. Courage, who is now retired, so they've been switching around. That might be the case. But by law, and I know it's written somewhere, we as councilmen are supposed to get this in the mail on the Saturday before the meeting, okay? Because it gives us an opportunity to review it. Now, it's nice to have the email part of it, but this is really where you can write some notes on it and so forth. For me, and that Council McKinnon would like it in the mail? Email is a convenience, it's, you know, but anyway, I want to thank you.
We'll take care of this, I don't think it's...
All right, and the May fourth thing, I want to be notified, Mr. President.
Yes, we will.
You know, we're...
Yeah, we'll make...
Can I explain that to also Council Matouski, to you? What happened, this was back in February. What happened was is that Council...
Excuse me, can we, can we end the meeting and do this?
I just wanted to explain, so he's...
I understand, I don't think this is the place and the time to have discussions.
All right, I thank you for the information, Mr. President. You are actually the leader of this group, and, you know, really, I'm just hearing some frustration that I have here.
Okay, we hear you. Motion adjourned, all in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.